Mayor Grisanti, you're still muted, I'm sorry.
It makes it pretty hard for me to open the meeting, doesn't it? I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of August the 23rd, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's presence as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malabu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malabu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malabu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Urey?
Here.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Do we have any public speakers on the closed session items?
You do not have any public speakers on the closed session item.
We will now recess to closed session to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We will reconvene at 6:30 to begin the regular session and hear the closed session report. So, we'll see you on the other side.
Mayor Grisanti, you're still muted.
I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of August 23rd, 2021. This meeting is held being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience. As we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting. Or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand. And I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the records. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May I have a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor Grisanti, members of the council, good evening. The council did convene a closed session tonight to present the government code section 54957.9. The council has authorized the initiation of litigation. Barring compliance with the Public Records Act that suit would reference. Or would be based on the Public Records Act, Government Code Section 6250 at SEC. Once the litigation has commenced, the particulars of the action. The defendants and the actual complaint will be available for public review. At the city clerk's office, we anticipate. If that finally is necessary, that it will be done within the next two weeks. So feel free to contact me or the city clerk to see if that litigation has been initiated and happily provide you with a copy.
Thank you, John. I'm about to add, ask for an approval of the agenda, but before I do, I'd like to add a motion to adjourn in the memory of Peter Banner, who was. Who died this week from cancer. Peter was a key member of the CERT team and had participated in just about everything we've done. From a time well before I joined the CERT team. He'll be a big loss. Okay, assuming I have approval?
Yes.
May I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to.
We can make a motion. We have a motion. Thank you, Karen. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Kelsey, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
I've asked before if we could have discussion before we take the roll call on this motion. Which we don't seem to do, but in any event, I understood from conversations with the city manager that. There's an issue with one of the items. I thought this is the right time to address that as opposed to when it comes up. Am I wrong about that?
I think that's probably a good idea. Steve, would you like to? Mr. McClary, would you like to help us out here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is recommending that we table and continue item 4A. I don't have that. Hold on. Let me get that in front of me. That is appeal number 21-002. For 20272 inland lane. We do not have the geotechnical staff available to answer. Questions tonight on this item and staff is recommending that we continue it. We can pick a date certain at this time, or we can get back and. Pull and find a date for you and get that back to you.
So could I ask for a friendly amendment to the motion to approve the agenda to table item 4A? And perhaps before we end the meeting, decide whether to pick another date certain or simply make it adjourned indefinitely?
I'll second it, but why don't we pick a date? So that everyone knows where we're going and if possible, I don't know. If we can do that at this point, if we have an aforesaid on our schedule.
You have any guidance for us, Steve? Have you gotten any guidance for us about when the necessary staff will be available for a meeting?
I believe we could continue this to the September 13th meeting. And I see Mr. Fernandez is on. I'll look for his concurrence on that.
We can continue to the 13th or the 27th, although my recommendation would likely be. For the 27th, just to give us enough time to address the comments in writing.
I like that idea too, because we have the Seaview Hotel continuation on the 13th and we're probably going to have a continuation of the emergency of the proposed new ordinance on the 13th as well.
And Mayor Grisanti, I would note that Mr. Haney, who is, I believe, the project applicant or proponent. Is raising his hand because it's his project. If you wanted to take comment from him relative to.
Be delighted to. Mr. Haney, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes, a date certain, the earliest possible date is what we would like.
I believe Adrian has just said the earliest date that's going to be adequate is the 27th of September. Is that correct, Adrian?
The earliest would be the 13th, but as Mayor Protemp just mentioned, we have two items. Or maybe three other or two other items that are scheduled for that hearing. It may be difficult to also add this item. But if there were also comments received that we would like to address in writing. And to do that, we wouldn't be able to address those at the next, if this was scheduled to the next meeting.
Okay. So it would seem that the 27th is the best choice.
That would be staff recommending.
Okay, I see Attorney Fred Gaines is raising his hand. Is he involved with this project as well?
He is.
Mr. Gaines? Would you, can we, you have something?
Yes, hello, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for calling on me. Unfortunately, I'm not available on the 27th. And I am the attorney for Mr. Condon on this. So we. Some of you know the history of this. Some of you are actually even involved in the history of this. It's gone on a long time. We would ask, and I know that the 13th, you have a lot of matters, but I would ask that this be put on for the very next meeting at the 13th. Thank you.
Well, I guess the question is, could we also at this time consider starting the meeting on the 13th an hour earlier? Then. And on that date, I would suggest we also move the public comment 22A to the end of the agenda. To assure that we get to this stuff. I don't. Does anyone know who John is? By the way?
I believe he's the property owner.
John, would you like to put an ORE in?
Yes, thank you. Actually Fred and Norm spoke on my behalf. The sooner the better would be great. This. Not necessarily in city council meetings, but this has been. Pushed like four or five times now in various settings costing me over a year and I've been at this for seven years now. So. Anything that could pull it forward and the comments that. Could be put forward and could be considered, could be done sooner. And I would also ask that the tactic of throwing in last minute details that. Get people confused about the issue the day before the hearing has been used to delay this project three or four times also. So I would ask that. There be some kind of deadline on submissions because this is getting really tiring and I'm just trying to build a home on my house, on my property.
Thank you, John. Okay, can we agree that we are. Adjourning this item to the September the 13th? And that we are going to try and start that meeting earlier? So that we can. Fit everything in.
I'll second that if it needs seconding.
Okay. Can we take the roll again, please?
Mayor Grisanti, I just want to clarify, your intent is to start the regular meeting before 6:30?
My intent is to start the regular meeting at 5:30. On that day.
John Cotty, I believe that would be an issue.
I believe we would start, but what we'd do is we'd call that a special meeting. You'd have a special meeting before your regular meeting to address. Certain items of business. But the intent, the intent is the same to start a little earlier. We'll work out the logistics to cover the Brown Act. Requirements for posting of agendas.
I see Bruce has his hand raised.
Yeah, so I support the notion of starting early to get it done, but I'm concerned based on research I did when I first was elected. About special meetings versus regular meetings that you can't just call a special meeting. In order to give yourself more time at a regular meeting, that it's got to truly be something special that comes up that requires you to diverge from your. Every other week, normal time practice. So John, if I'm wrong about that, I'm glad I'd be wrong, but I'm concerned about that.
Understood, and I think that the issue here is you have a project that's being continued and it. It does warrant that special consideration for a special meeting. So I wouldn't have a problem calling a special meeting under the Brown Act. To handle items of business to make sure that. The press of business, the impressive business that the city experiences, which is very heavy. Would allow you all to consider all your business.
So if I'm clear, what we'd be doing then is we'd be having a special meeting at 5:30 or whatever time with one item, which would be this one that we're continuing. Then we would be adjourning and then we would start a regular meeting with the other agenda?
Correct.
Okay. And you're satisfied that's doable? Okay.
Yes, I mean, you could do it on another date, but just since that's the day we all know you're getting together, it makes. Appropriate sense to do it that way.
Okay. Steve Yurin has his hand raised.
Just a question, John. If we don't get this item done in an hour, and this is a. Here's to be a fairly complicated issue. What happens then?
We'd have to adjourn it to either the end of your regular meeting or to another day.
Okay.
You know. I know Mr. Gaines can't be present on the 27th. And I know the items that are coming back on the 13th. It's likely that this project is not going to get fully considered. On that day, whether you do it at five o'clock, maybe even four o'clock. I would suggest if, I know Mr. Gaines is going to raise his hand again, but you might want to consider going into that first meeting in October. To ensure that you have enough time for items that have already been continued. And for this continued item. It would also give Adrian a chance to confirm in fact that the geotechnical experts can be here on the 13th, which I don't know that he's necessarily done. So I would suggest that you just push it to that first meeting in October. It's the safest bet to make sure that the project gets heard. And that the projects that have been continued to the 13th get heard as well.
I see Steve's hand and I see Bruce's hand, but I don't see Fred Gaines' hand. Steve?
I would agree with what John just said. This, this is, this issue from reading it is reasonably complicated. And I want to make sure that Adrian has time to provide. Meaningful answers to some of the stuff these people have asked. And it doesn't seem to me we're going to get there on the 13th. If we get to the 13th, we may not have time to finish it. So why don't we schedule it at a time that we can do it right? Because I think. Mr. Condon would like a. Good review of his project and make sure he's getting everybody's attention when we do that. So I would agree with John Cotty.
Bruce Silverstein, please.
Thank you. So in deference to the applicant who I know wants to get his day in court, so to speak. Sooner than later. Here's a thought. Perhaps we could have a special meeting earlier to do the camping ordinance. Because I think we can get that away in an hour. And then convene the 6:30 meeting and we would have two appeals on the agenda for that meeting. The Seaview Hotel and the inland lane project. Just a thought.
I've got Fred Gaines, who would like to weigh in, and then I'm going to call on Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members. I. Was, the reason you didn't see my hand is I was on the phone to the client. Who was willing to accept the October 13th. I mean, but now you're, Mr. Silverstein's offering the September 13th, but. The bottom line is that they would go to October 13th if it can't be accommodated on September 13th.
I thought that Bruce's idea of starting this special meeting with the, the item that. I think we're all. Feel could be probably done within an hour. And then putting it as part of the regular, this one as part of the regular agenda on September the 13th is probably doable. Is that what your idea, correct, Bruce? Can't hear you.
Yes, that was muted. And if you'll accept a friendly amendment to the motion, that would be, I would move that we do that, that we take it off the calendar today and. Convene a special meeting on the 13th to do the camping ordinance, assuming that we vote today to go forward with it, which we may not. And that we then put the 4A and on the regular agenda for the 13th.
Okay. Karen?
Well, actually, I was going to ask for clarification on that. So, so. What Mayor Protemp Silverstein was suggesting is to continue 4C? And not hear it tonight? Is that correct?
No, 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 no. Continue 4A to September 13th.
Okay.
4C has two components. One is a proposal to adopt their. Four C has two components. One is a proposal to adopt their resolution. The second is a proposal to. Ask staff to do a little bit more work and then come back in two weeks with a, with a substitute.
Brad, do you need a view?
The second part of it is, is, is to ask staff to come back so we can do something else hopefully in two weeks. So I'm proposing that we. That when we come back hopefully in two weeks, we could do that in a special meeting rather than have that during the regular meeting and that'll give us time for the two appeals.
Okay, so are we talking about a special meeting just earlier that date?
Yes.
Not a, not a different date. Okay, thank you.
Steve, is, your hand is raised?
I just, I would check with Adrian. I mean, the real key in this thing are getting, making sure we've got solid answers to the questions that have come in. And initially Adrian said he would like more time to be able to get those answers done correctly. I think they're going to be a key to whatever we do. So I think we ought to just check Adrian's schedule, make sure we can hit that.
Um, yes, as mentioned before, I mean. We're not going to be able to make any edits to the staff report if we schedule it for the, the, you know, the next meeting on the thirteenth, but. Um, I think the applicant believes that. Uh, we would have all the consultants here to answer those questions in person.
Well. I, I think we're all clear on what we want to do now. So let's have a vote to do it and move on. Kelsey, can you take the role? Can you try to take the role again? I know we'll interrupt you.
Restate the motion if you would, please.
It's to approve the agenda continuing item four A to the September thirteenth regular meeting.
And to schedule a special meeting for five or five thirty on the thirteenth to address. The continuation of four C, assuming that we vote to do that at this meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Pearson and Mayor Grisanti, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelsey. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August thirteenth, twenty twenty one, with the amended agenda posted on August twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Okay. Item one A is a ceremonial presentation and it is truly ceremonial because the person I'm presenting it to is not available at this time. This is a proclamation. Uh, declaring September twenty first, twenty first, September of two thousand twenty as. Childhood cancer awareness month. And a stat stating the support for it from the city of Malibu. I'm sure someone else could have done a much better job of presenting than I did at a meeting in person, but it's a lovely proclamation. Okay. That should take us to item two A. Oh, I, I should read this. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids Cancer Connection Report, cancer is a leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen hundred of our. Sixteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers and. Whereas founded over twenty-five years ago by Steve Firestein. A member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated. And Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of. Vital patient psychological services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital L.A. City of Hope Cedar Sinai Medical Center, Mattel Children's Hospital, UCLA. L.A. County USC Medical Center, Harbor UCLA Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the county. Throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families and. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors toy distributions, pedicist therapy, family saline programs. KCC Super Car Experience and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Malibu. Declares the month of September twenty twenty one as childhood cancer awareness month in Malibu. And urges the community to become more proactive in the fight against this terrible disease. Thank you. Kelsey, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, we have three speakers for this item, Bill Sampson, Tim Horton and Lester Saff. We'll hear from Bill Sampson first.
Bill, are you available?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Evening. Am I on?
You're on.
Looks like. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Nine months ago. Two of the five of you. Uh, voted to essentially destroy our existing zoning ordinance and create a new one. We were also promised you were going to get us a hosted ordinance, number four seventy-two. It was sold to the public. Oh, we'll get this through coastal. Well, you don't get anything through coastal in Malibu. They hate us. What has happened with ordinance number four seventy-two? I haven't heard or seen anything. Uh, with regard to short-term rentals, um, would be nice to hear from some of you people. It'd be nice to hear from staff. On one particular issue, I have written cordially to Mr. Cotty at least six times without even an acknowledgement. He received the message. Would be nice to hear from you, John. There are some other things coming up. The highway is supposed to be used by all of us. I just got notice it's going to be closed again. By a Singapore company. I won't be able to get out. I'm going to be a prisoner of my house while the triathlon's going on. You need to fix. The highway so that we can always get to it. Rosemary's got a serious medical problem. If I can't get her out of here, I have no idea what I'll do. And we're not going to be able to get out here on Saturday and Sunday late in September. Please fix that. If they've got to have an event on the highway, make sure we can use it. Same with cars, coffee, whatever you got going, triathlons. I don't care what it is. I just want to be able to use the highway for which I pay. If I'm prohibited from it, you should make those guys pay all of us. Pick an amount, maybe the amount that Airbnb users operating motels on my street are currently charging fifteen hundred bucks a day. I might consider the three thousand bucks a day, the three thousand bucks for the weekend rather, so I can at least charter a helicopter to get Rosemary out of here if she happens to get sick. I really don't want that to happen. I did not hear, and maybe it was published, I just wondered if Ms. Feldman. Got her last hundred and fifty thousand bucks or if she was hired as a city manager by some other jurisdiction. It was whatever it was, it was money well spent to be rid of her, but I just wondered if we'd, if I'd actually gotten to contribute to, to that. Those questions, uh, would be nice if they could be answered. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. Bruce, Steve, you guys have worked your butts off to try to get this emergency ordinance done. I know how much time you put in. I've read some of the work on it. It's unbelievable. Thank you so much. You've done it against an incredible amount of resistance. From way too many. Thank you, both of you. Bruce in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Our next speaker is Tim Horton.
Hey, Tim. Are you available?
Uh, can, uh.
Yeah, I can hear you, Tim.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my name is Tim Horton. I've been a member of the. Malibu Emergency Community Emergency Response Team for the past eleven years. That's AKA Malibu Cert. I'd like to say a few words about our. Uh, fellow Cert team member, Peter Banner, who passed away last, last week due to cancer. Okay. And so Peter and his wife, Donna, joined Malibu Cert back in twenty eleven. Uh, they have been tireless workers and board members of the Malibu Cert. It's been an honor to train for disasters, to prepare for disasters and work during disasters. Uh, alongside Peter for the past decade. He was a Woolsey hero. Working tirelessly at the relief centers in the aftermath of Woolsey, uh, the relief centers at Zuma and Point Dune Elementary. He's also a COVID hero, working the vaccination line and the testing line, uh, offered in part by the city of Malibu. That astounds me. Even though he was immunocompromised, he worked the back, uh, the testing line long before vaccinations were available. He did not want his cancer to stop him from doing the things he does and one of which was serving his community. Professionally, he was, uh, he worked in the, the field of renewable energy for several decades. Uh, among his family and friends, he was known as a human Swiss Army knife. He was a MacGyver of sorts, able to fix anything. And the city of Malibu benefited from those talents he gave. He was one of the good ones. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Tim.
Our next speaker is Lester Saff.
Good evening, Lester. Are you available to speak?
Yeah, I'm still, oh, there I go. Okay, I, I wanted to follow up with what Tim just said. Uh, because Peter deserves it. First of all, Peter never sought the limelight. Instead, he chose the one job which ensures anonymity. He serves as the logistics officer for Malibu Cert. Rarely does one in logistics receive the recognition he, she deserves. Despite that, he seemed to relish the challenge. Through his efforts identifying, locating and pricing critical supplies, Malibu was able to acquire needed materials and is now better prepared for emergencies. Peter assisted Donna, his wife, teaching the basic Cert course to resident residents of Malibu. Through their efforts, more Cert-trained volunteers are now able to act as the very first first responders. For an emergency, first responders are easily overwhelmed. He volunteered to work traffic detail during COVID testing at some peril, I might add to himself. He tirelessly worked the Zuma station during the Woolsey fire. When Cert was criticized for being absent during Woolsey, Peter never bothered to mention that he was stationed at Zuma for the duration nor. That he purchased gas at his own expense to supply those unable to attain any. Speaking of Woolsey, we all learned the hard way that communication is critical. Over the past several years, Peter worked to establish more options for both the team and the city. Through his efforts and those of Richard Garvey, several new options such as a cross repeater on the point as well as a repeater on Castro Peak were developed. Though not feel fully operational, they soon will be. Often Peter found and then provided essential information to team members. Emails on dual fuel generators, different antenna types, relevant maps, and on rare occasions, articles on topics of interest to some but not all. My favorite, why soap works. Several years ago, the Cert team was being challenged by internal and external forces. At that time, it wasn't clear if Malibu Cert would survive. Fortunately, Peter sat on the management team. His clear, precise, insightful analysis always brought us back to reality. So we could more confidently address the perils ahead. He stepped up his game when needed the most. The proceeding was just a glimpse of Peter's efforts on behalf of Malibu. For this, he deserves recognition, even though he wasn't logistics.
Thank you, Lester.
Mayor Grisanti, Scott Dietrich contacted me and let me know he accidentally signed up for the wrong item and intended to speak on two A. He is in the meeting if you're ready to hear his comments.
Well, I guess. Yes. Let's hear it from, let's hear what Scott has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And I will just, uh, add to what Les and Tim said about Peter. Always a great help in our Cert meetings. But first I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, each one of you. Um, for all the work and efforts you guys are putting in. I watched that, uh, meeting on the ninth that went past midnight. I don't know if everybody realizes how much work you guys are putting in, but, uh, you know, it's really. A benefit to our city, what you're doing. Um, what I did want to bring up tonight. Is we've heard P G E. Has finally decided that they will start undergrounding certain transmission lines because of the fire danger and it's costing them so much money. Um, like this is a no-brainer. Everybody's knowing about it. And I mean, it seems the fires either start from homeless or. Uh, S C E. So I'm wondering what we can do, this is a question, what we can do to try to get. S C E, who provides power to all of us. To start undergrounding. The cost of fighting the fires is horrendous. They don't count that. They say, oh, it's always too expensive, but it doesn't need to be. So I, I'm just encouraging. You or anyone listening, how do we get S C E to respond and start undergrounding? We're going to pay for it one way or the other. We either pay. For putting stuff underground or we pay for firefighters, which that's a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. Uh, do we have any commission or committee reports? And city manager, we're going to go with commission reports. Is there anybody waiting to speak about that?
No, you don't have any commissioner reports this evening.
Okay. Are there any of the ad hoc committees that wish to re, to report to us? Mr. McClary, it looks like you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a few quick updates tonight. Uh, wanted to update everybody on where we're doing in terms of, uh. The, uh, impacts from COVID. Uh, we've now had four employees who have tested positive over the past month. Uh, so that's in addition to the two that we had reported a couple of weeks ago. Uh, contact, contact tracing has been performed, uh, in all of those cases. Uh, currently, City Hall remains open. Um, our building and safety and planning counters remain open. However, we are encouraging persons as much as possible to. Uh, try to do work remotely if they can with the city, either by phone or by email or by other means. Uh, and of course, but we do remain open, uh, to accommodate and, uh, and help you out as much as we can. Uh, but, uh, we do have some additional folks who are, are working remotely. Uh, but again, we do have the public counters open. Uh, and again, we're, we're taking these steps really in, uh, reaction to the. High rates of transmission, uh, that are being seen across, uh, L.A. County, uh, in particular due to the Delta variant. Also just wanted to report that we, um, are monitoring, uh, and working with beaches and harbor. Regarding the current impacts, uh, due to the high tide and surf to the Westward Beach Road. Of course, that falls under the jurisdiction of beaches and harbor, but of course it, it does impact the city in many ways. Uh, so we've been working with them, uh, but they've been doing the work, of course. Uh, they've been working on trying to shore up that roadway. They've been placing a lot of rock. Uh, and so that road remains closed and pretty busy as they have a lot of trucks and equipment moving through there. Of course, that roadway feeds into the, uh, public parking lot, um, so that is currently unavailable. Also just wanted to pass along that we have a administration and finance committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow at three thirty P.M. That will be a remote meeting, but that is a public meeting. We will be discussing potential revenue measures for the city and other matters for the committee to hear and discuss. That is the extent of my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McClary. I don't see any hands. Do we have anyone from the, oh, Mikey, I'm sorry.
I assume we're ready for council comments. Is that correct?
I was going to ask if there was anyone from the sheriff's department who wanted to make a report to us?
That's an excellent idea.
So is there anyone from the sheriff's department in the room? Kelsey? That looks like Jim Braden.
Yeah, I'm here. The as far as, like the city manager said, we've been working with beaches in harbors, trying to keep people out of that area so they can work efficiently and try to mitigate their issue with the sand movement over there and the caving off of the roadway. The the last week may not have heard, we had an armed robbery at Tuna Beach of a beachgoer on Saturday morning. The suspect was taken into custody about 15 minutes later. We also had a person arrested for felony arson behind the CVS who tossed a lit, it was a cigarette into a large amount of cardboard. That, that person was located and also arrested within minutes. The so the deputies are out there standing on top of step. The the I've been working with Bruce and also Mikey, and we've been working on this emergency ordinance for trying to minimize fire issues for the city. Kind of mimics what the county did of keeping encampments out of the hillsides and the high fire danger areas. So I've seen Bruce's final proposal on that, and I'm supportive of it. The, it'll be something to where, it's not something that, you know, solves our homeless issue. It's about mitigating fire issues within the city of Malibu that as the winds come up, as from the drought and everything else. And just like in Woolsey Fire, we lost hundreds of houses within a matter of hours. It's a serious issue, and it, it is a emergent issue. And I, I believe that that proposal, it'll be challenging to enforce, but we're up to that challenge, and it'll take the city, too. It's not just throwing it all on one person or something, or one, one entity. It, it'll take a joint effort between the city and the sheriff's department and Lasha and the host team and anybody else we can get involved to help try to minimize the fire risk to the city. So I'm open to any questions anyone may have about anything going on in Malibu.
I can't begin to thank you guys enough for what they're doing out there. And the, the shopping center that the fire was in is the one my office happens to be located in. And the, the gentleman who was robbed at the beach, I'm sure he was extremely grateful that you guys were able to get that guy that quickly. So I can't thank you enough. I see Bruce's hand is raised and then Karen's. Bruce's, Bruce?
Thank you. So Jim, I, I believe I saw something in writing about the, the, the person who was arrested for arson being unhoused. And I haven't heard any further detail about the robbery. Can you shed some light on either or both of them?
Yeah, the, the arsonist definitely is an unhoused individual. And he was arrested for a felony section because there's just, I mean, there's just not a lot of reason. Arson explosives came out and interviewed him also. The, but his actions, it, it adds up to, it's an act of arson, simple as that. And he is an unhoused individual. The the robbery suspect was a gentleman out of Tennessee. It appeared that he's living in his car. And I guess evidently wanted gas money, so he took a gun and pointed it at someone and took their wallet. So luckily, that person was able to contest, contact us quickly, give us good information. And that, yeah, within minutes, I was down talking to Ken Foreman, the head of beaches and harbors down at the Westwood Beach operation. And I left there when I heard the robbery go out, but I only made it a couple miles before the deputies were detained and made gunpoint at Los Flores and PCH. So, and they took him in custody without incident. But yeah, I, I believe the person, he may have not been residing in Malibu, but it appeared he lived in his car. Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Karen?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Jim. I'm just wondering if you will be able to stay on the meeting? Because you did mention one of our later agenda items, so I don't want to ask you about it until we get to that item.
For 4C?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on and monitor. I'll, I'll be available for comments. It's an important issue. So, yeah, I'll be available.
Okay, great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Karen. And, and especially thank you for helping that gentleman find immediate housing. Our visitor from Tennessee.
Yes. Well, we also have, we also, through the efforts of one of your suppression cars, it took them about an hour of talking because the lady by Starbucks, I mentioned her before, her name was Karen McNeil. And she appeared to have medical issues and different things, so she was with their efforts. Ended up at St. John's Hospital and the people's concern and stuff is going to try to get her in housing. She has some severe medical issues and she probably has some, some mental issues also. There is housing available to someone like her, so hopefully they can get her housed and she doesn't just return back to the street. So, but it took, it did take a lot of effort on the deputy's part to get her to go, go and address her, her needs, so.
Thank you. Okay. City Council reports. Mikey, you had wanted to start, so you're up.
Sure, just get it, get it going here.
Followed by Steve.
Okay. Thank you to all the speakers. I always appreciate that. The comments on Peter are well taken. Yeah, amazing guy, and thanks for the people that spoke, Tim and Lester and Scott. Thank you very much for that. Bill. So yes, the one ordinance that people didn't want related to STRs was obviously went forward and has pretty much ended the ongoing party house situation. There might be isolated incidences, but there's no ongoing permanent ones that have been reported that I'm aware of. So it's definitely improved. Doubt it's perfect. Nothing is. And I can leave staff to get more into details on where the item is to, which makes me glad we brought it forward because you're right, it's hard to get from coastal. And they did request a lot of information from the city, which we have gotten to them, and, and maybe we can get an update on that from somebody that's a staff member that's more in the weeds on that. So thanks for bringing, bringing that up. As far as the triathlon, I hear you. Annual event proceeds, anyone on the city council spend, I think we're in year eight of a 10-year contract. And I agree, last, well, I guess two years ago, because it didn't happen last year. I've always been a fan of that. A lot of people I know go to, a lot of residents go to it. Last time it ran, it had the most impact I've ever seen, I have to admit. We were trapped in our neighborhood in Malibu West as well, and I thought, wow. So look forward to seeing that that's been rectified. That would be nice. I agree with you on that. And thank you, Steve, for your report. I think what happened to Westwood Beach Road, we can look at as a very clear outlook to what rising sea levels look like. And it's not going to be a one-time event, in my opinion. Doesn't look like that is going to be the case here. And Lieutenant Braden, always thanks for your reports. I would say that what you're dealing with is, you know this, I'm just saying it, say it out loud. It's just a preview of the lack of medical and psychological services we have for people in need. I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll keep it a wide net that needs to be cast there very clearly. As far as my report on what I've been up to in the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. Number one was I attended another microgrid incentive program meeting. There's a series of these. They're long, they're boring, they're, they're very more technical than anything. I've got them all recorded. I, I want to learn more about funding that we can bring to the city. And I'll need more help than just me, but when we can get bandwidth, as people may know, I'm very, very interested in this. Karen and I worked on bringing something forward so long ago that it's, well, it's yet another one of the many projects that the city held up, and I'm a big fan of it. I attended a homeless homelessness state and federal funding webinar, and I was really glad to see that Susan was on it as well. Of course, as we deal with this issue that we did not cause and descended on our city, all outside help is, should be expected and certainly needed. Also attended a Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee Prop 50 workshop, which has to do with a project people could apply for through funds available for water quality-related projects in the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee area. Also participated in a virtual evacuation drill for Tukanga. That was somehow played out with all the agencies and done virtually because of COVID, and I believe and hope there's going to be a Malibu version coming at some point. But it was good to listen on this one. It was nice of Senator Stern to drop by and, and thank everyone as well. Maybe the biggest event, not really quite related to city council, but I had to fly to Clearwater, Florida for work and managed to do that and come back and not have COVID. Was actually pretty happy to get that test back. I did not have a lot of faith that I wouldn't get COVID. I want to thank Steve Euring for covering the regular Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee meeting as I was working with Bruce at that point on parts of 4C. As far, we also had a school ad hoc committee concerning recent events that certainly probably most people are aware of. Certainly, I assume all parents and families are aware of. And I'm just going to leave it at that because I'll let Karen comment on that as, why not? Because I would like to hear her comments on it. But yes, certainly has cost Karen and I a lot of time unnecessarily. I also attended a California Mayor's Coalition call where Senator Becker was, was, was speaking, and he was the guest to talk about his SB 640 bill, which concerns state funding on road projects. Something that, if you're a city councillor, is much more important than, than anyone wants to hear about because infrastructure is actually our biggest asset as a city. I also attended another community brigade meeting. Still working on that. We're not giving up. Hopefully, we have a meeting with Chief Osby coming up soon. And there you go. That is my report for now, so we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve Euring, followed by Karen Fair. Unmute yourself, Steve, please.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Jim Braden. Chris Frost gives me updates every now and then, and he's very complimentary in terms of what you and your staff are doing, so thank you very much for that. I did attend the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting. It was the longest four and a half hour meeting I've ever been in, Mikey. Thank you very much. This, the last couple of weeks, I've had some, some lows and some highs. I think the low was the report we got from our census report. And, you know, with the population dropping as much as it is, it's probably something we ought to think about whether we want to get together and sort of just kick around where we think Malibu was going and what, if anything, we should be doing to help it get there. Because it's a dramatic change from what we thought we had. And I guess the high was, the city sent out the Phase 2 assessments to Sarah Retreat and the, or to Sarah Canyon. And the retreat up on the hill got an assessment of 3.6 million. And they're still trying to, they're still trying to pull some of the Franciscans off the floor. This is going to be interesting. Yeah, 3.6, right. I got an email from a lady named Dawn Erickson. Dawn is a Malibu resident, got hit by the fire. But she's an artist and a very, very good one. And she's done a number of pamphlets dealing with the environment that, that she's distributed to schools over the last couple of years. And she sent me one, she's also a very good proponent for dark skies. So she has created another pamphlet that basically talks about the animals who wander around at night and how they do that, and, and how the nightlight affects them. I was going to try and get it to you today, but I didn't get a hard copy. As soon as I get one, I will make sure all of you get to see that because she's done an excellent job doing that. But I'm just wondering, Steve, you know, we've been trying to get some, some progress on our dark sky ordinance. At least get one gas station or a couple of gas stations converted over. So maybe if you get a chance, you may give us an idea of where we stand with that project. Because I think that is something a lot of people are looking forward to. And then the last item, and this is something they want to just think about. I got a call today on this motel that's going in front of the Planning Commission on Thursday. And there's a concern that nobody in Malibu knows this meeting is taking place. So we just may want to think about whether we, you know, notice that well enough for the residents to be able to get in there and tell people what they think with that project. So that's all I got, Paul. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Karen?
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I'd like to address, first of all, thank our public speakers. I did not have the pleasure of knowing Peter Banner, but I'd like to thank Tim Horton and Les Saft for speaking about him, and I want to acknowledge his contributions. Yeah, I don't think logistics is, is ever a glamour item, but obviously, nothing can happen without it. And working the, the COVID testing line and working the Zuma parking lot after Woolsey, and those are labors of love. Those are not fun duties, and that shows a huge amount of dedication. I just want to acknowledge that. I'm not sure if this is the time to comment on a closed, on a consent item on 3B6, the triathlon. John? Can you?
No. It would not be, we wouldn't pull that out.
Okay, just because we had a public comment on it, but I'll, I'll wait on that. Yeah, Westwood Beach Road. As somebody said to me, in fact, a member of my own family, climate change in our own backyard. So it's here. It's not something we just read about anymore. It does make me wonder if the county could have anticipated that and brought those boulders in before the road washed out as opposed to after. I don't know if anybody else wondered that, but I did, just have to say. And thank you, Lieutenant Braden, as always. Sounds like we've had more activities than usual, and I'm really happy to know about those two very quick arrests. Things that have been keeping me busy. I attended the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Convocation, which was this past Monday morning, something they do every year. Of course, it was on Zoom. Which was all fine and good. Longtime employees get recognized as part of the annual event. People with 30, 35 years of service to the district. But the very next morning, I received a video from Santa Monica Malibu Unified. And I will say, the words that come to my mind when I got that video And I will say, the words that come to my mind when I got that video are shameful, deceitful, and inflammatory. And if anybody hasn't seen it, please contact me. I'd be happy to send you the link. The city put out a response to it on Friday. I've been contacted by people left and right. I will say one thing about that video, it has re-energized our base and ourselves. So this issue is not going away, Santa Monica, in case you're watching. And their tactics are not appreciated. One thing I was able to do, the timing was miraculous, was after our meeting this past Thursday night, the 19th, we adjourned and I had signed up earlier in the day to make a public comment during the school board meeting, and I thought the chances of us finishing our meeting and me getting to speak are very, very slim to none. But then I heard my name called right after we adjourned. So I did get to speak, and there were other people from Malibu who spoke about that video in particular. I want to thank all of those people. We're in this for the long haul. And I don't know why Malibu is considered any different from any other community in terms of local control of its schools. So that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul. Okay, so although it's been two weeks since our last regular meeting, we did have a continuation of that meeting this past Thursday. And in the 10 days leading up to that continued meeting, I worked nearly full time on two things. One, working with the city attorney, the city manager, and city staff to improve the Sea View Hotel project in ways that I might support it, might, might vote to support it when it comes back for approval on September 13th, I think. Result of the work that we did, we have a much more improved contract and on some other details. The other thing I was doing a lot of time was working with Mikey, city attorney, city manager, public safety manager, Jim Braden and Chuck Becerra, various members of the homeless task force, and various residents to craft a proposed emergency resolution and a proposed new camping ordinance that are designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We'll be talking about that later. Bill Sampson had a nice shout out for me and for Steve, but yeah, to, to, Steve, I know, I suspect, although I haven't spoken to him, I suspect Steve's going to be supportive of this, but Steve and I worked on something that is different back in December. And Mikey was kind enough to pick up the, the ball and run with something different, which we were able to reach agreement on over the past couple of weeks. So this is, this is, he deserves credit for what we're going to be talking about later, too. It was only as a result of a lot of discussions and compromise that we got to where we got. So we'll talk more about that later. Over the past three days, I've been working very hard to get my arms around the proposed project on Big Rock that we were going to address, but we just put off to September 13th. But in addition to reviewing extensive documentation that we got from the staff, I did perform independent legal research respecting some of the critical and difficult issues, in particular, CEQA issues. And I provided questions as, you know, Paul had suggested two weeks ago that I should provide my questions and comments to the staff and to the city attorney in advance of the meeting, and that hopefully they could be shared with other council members so that we could have a more fluid conversation. I, I continue to believe that they can't be shared under the Brown Act, although I haven't gotten clarity on that. But I did share my questions and comments with the staff and with the city attorney. And I expect that I'll get answers before we continue that meeting. Obviously, we've all been focused on and having conversations with people about the Westwood Beach Road erosion slash destruction and the La Costa carbon fence issue. They are both ongoing, obviously. You know, climate change, yes, everyone's mentioning it clearly a problem, you know. I gotta say, I've been saying this for a while. There's nothing we're going to do to stop climate change. There's, it's going to take a global paradigm shift. If this whole world doesn't get in on that and get on it aggressively, we're doomed. So it's got, it's got to get done. Talk is not going to change it. And certainly Malibu is not going to change it, and California is not going to change it. It's going to require everybody. I also watched the inaugural meeting of the Homelessness Task Force. That was interesting. I watched multiple recordings of planning commission meetings because I've been interested in some issues, and I'll talk briefly about that. Last week, on Thursday, I commented that I'm concerned by what I've observed to be an approach by the planning department, the planning commission, and prior city councils, I didn't say prior, that there's a bias towards approving development over following the applicable rules. After I said that, Mikey accurately responded that Malibu is one of the most difficult places to build, and it often takes years to obtain approvals for new construction. He's absolutely correct about that. And while I agree that Malibu is a difficult place to build, and it often takes years to obtain approvals, that's not inconsistent with my observation of a pro-development bias by the planning department, planning commission, and prior city councils. Malibu is a difficult place to build new projects by design. The slow growth approach permeates our zoning code, LIP, LCP, and other applicable guidelines and standards, all of which are built upon the foundation of Malibu's vision statement and mission statement. This isn't Los Angeles, which is an urban center that thrives on development. This is Malibu. It's a rural enclave outside the big city. Rather than make decisions in conformity with that slow growth, slow growth design of our law, the planning department, planning commission, and prior city councils have found ways to cut corners to overcome the deliberate slow growth, slow growth design of our law. So when I've asked questions about why various permits have been granted despite appearing to be contrary to the letter of applicable code provisions, I've often been told something to the effect of the applicant had an argument that blah, blah, blah. Having an argument is not the same thing as being right. It's very easy to make up arguments. It's even very easy to make up arguments that might be right. But what ultimately matters is whether the argument is right, not whether there's an argument. Other times I've been told something to the effect that if we use that standard, few applicants would be able to avoid the need to do XYZ. Again, that's not the standard for whether the applicant has or has not satisfied the applicable legal requirement. The standard is whether they have, not whether it'll be difficult if they have to. I see expedience taking the place of accuracy. I recently watched the planning commission meeting at which the application was considered for the Malibu Jewish Center and Synagogue. I'm not going to comment on the merits because it might come up before us. But I will say, at the very beginning, I was amazed. I saw the chair cut off questions of the staff by a council, by a commissioner. This was before it even went to public comment. Just there were some questions of the staff. The, the council, the commissioner was cut off, not because it was the wrong time, but because the chair thought he had asked too many questions already, and that was followed by a motion by another commissioner to approve the project. The public hadn't weighed in yet. There hadn't been any deliberation. It was just, let's get to this and approve it. To me, that's insane. So everywhere I turn, like I said, there's a vibe that seems to be, let's get this approved. Interpretations are created to accommodate development, to avoid EIRs, and to support the grant of variances, which I've heard the term used seem to be handed out like candy on Halloween. I'm not sure they're handed out like candy on Halloween, but they're actually handed out fairly liberally, and in my experience, more liberally than the code provides. I'll have more to say about that when we review specific projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. I've been fairly busy as well. I'm not going to belabor the issue with you guys, but I did have a meeting with Joe Edmiston and Representatives of La Costa Beach and Steve McClary, and we talked about he has received a letter from the Coastal Commission asking him to open the gate on the lot closest to La Costa Beach. And so we talked for a short while about the proper design of an access at that point. And then the conversation went somewhat sideways. But the meeting was not called to talk about the larger lot where there is no fence. But most of us agree that if they, if they have a gate that opens and is closes, closed at a normal time like everything else, and has signs and trashcans, there is no point in leaving the other stretch where people can fall on the rocks open. So I'm hopeful that something will happen as a result of that. And Jim Braden, you did a great job, and thank you for reminding me that I had asked you about that nice lady who was staying in front of the Starbucks for four or five days, and I'm glad you were able to help her. So I'm going to jump to since we have all the council member reports, I think it's time for the council, the consent calendar. Have any, would anyone like to pull an item that is on the consent calendar?
Mayor Crisanti, item 3B6 has been pulled by the public.
3B6?
Yes.
And can you remind me of what three, which one 3B6 is, please?
That's the triathlon item.
Very good. What is, what are the thoughts as to the other items on the consent calendar? Is anyone, I see Bruce's hand. I, you're, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm not going to ask to pull something, but I, I just have a quick comment on one, but I'll wait to see if anybody else is going to pull something first.
Was anyone planning on pulling something? Now, you're up, Scott Bruce.
The only comment I want to make is item two, which is, I'm sorry, item five, which is to change the form of the minutes from novels to action items. I not only am going to support that, but I like wholeheartedly support that one. I think that one's a big improvement. I think it'll save the staff a ton of work that's unnecessary, especially since the recordings are available. So I just thought that that deserved a comment.
So is that a motion to go ahead with approving the consent calendar with the exception of 3B6?
You're always so good at putting those words in my mouth. Sure.
Just grab them right in there. I hear a second from Karen. Kelsey, would you like to call the roll?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Uring?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's go to 3B6, and it was pulled by a member of the public. So can we hear from that member of the public, please?
Yes, it was pulled by Bill Sampson.
Hi, Bill, are you still with us?
I am. I have to go to bed soon so I can get up and go swimming and reduce the backpack that I carry hanging over the front of my belt.
Well, I'm glad you stayed up for us, so.
Okay, I, I, I disagree wholeheartedly with some of you, but I do appreciate all the time you put in. 3B6. Okay, my very first Malibu client wandered into my office on the highway. I was out here all by myself. I stuck a shingle out. Well, it was a little bigger than that at the time, as I recall. He walks in and asks me to do something for him, and I, I was smart enough to say, not, not say, what's that? I told him I'd do it for him. He eventually taught me about capitalism. He says, I'm a nice guy, and he was. And he says, somebody wants me to do something for them. I always say, I'll be more than happy to do that. And he was. But I want to get mine for it, was the catch. 3B6. Let's see, we've had, I think this started out, it was a Delaware LLC headquartered in Texas, or it's sometime in Denver. Current mailing address is a, an obvious mail drop in Huntington Beach. And Malibu isn't really getting anything for this proposed deal. Ask for something. How about compensating the residents for the inconvenience? Mikey mentioned earlier, two years ago, it was absolutely intolerable. Could not get out. Had somebody coming to see me. They parked a long way away and came here. Fortunately, they're probably fitter than I am, so the walk didn't kill them. But if they want to get something, let's get something back. And by the way, they're in Singapore. If something goes wrong, are we going to pay John to go over and sue them in Singapore? You gotta be kidding me. We'll never collect. We won't be able to. It's just too far away. The only good news on this to me was, as near as I could figure out, they're not in the Netherlands Antilles where corporations issue something quaint that I've only heard of, and I've never seen one. They have bearer stock. If you have the certificate in your hand, you own the company. It's a little better than that, but let's get something for this, so these guys don't run roughshod over us yet again. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I see Karen's hand, followed by Steve Uring.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, thank you. I have, okay, so this is prepared by Jesse Bobbitt. So I've got some questions for either Jesse or the city attorney. I see that we have a contract in place here that goes until 2023. So my first question is, is the change of ownership on the part of the operator, or whatever we call it, owner-operator, is that invalidated or changed some way in the contract?
Councilmember Fair, no, that's, no, it's not. We're really just memorializing a name change of, of the entity above the triathlon company, because they're just changing subsidiaries. We're not, the, the contract is still valid in place. We're really, this is really just a name change.
Okay, all right. Is it possible, this might be for the city manager or whoever wants to weigh in, should we be looking at additional traffic enforcement for this event? Is, is there a cutoff for registration where we can anticipate the numbers and maybe get better coverage for that date? Anybody?
I can, I can say we could definitely have a solid guess on the numbers by this point. We're getting fairly close to the event, and I think we're probably a month out at this point, coming up on this weekend. So getting a good count on the numbers should be fairly, fairly reasonable to do. So I don't see an issue with that. I will say a couple of items to note, or I guess the one big item to note is traffic, Pacific Coast Highway is not fully shut down. It's very similar to the Malibu Half Marathon, where there's one lane each direction. It is definitely impacted. I don't want to take away from that. I'm not suggesting that it's not, just I want to be clear, it's Pacific Coast Highway is not actually closed.
Okay, so I guess the other part of my question is, we, I know that we do get additional enforcement. Should, can we, can and should we be looking at additional, additional enforcement above and beyond what we've had in the past?
We certainly could look into that. I know that they submit a temporary use permit through the planning department, and then they work with the sheriff's department to get the number of sheriffs out there that they see fit, and they actually pay for that outside of their, their fees to us. So I'm certain we can look into that and, and speak with the sheriff's department and planning and hear their thoughts on it, along with Public Works.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. It seems to me, I'll be the first to say I'm not a lawyer, that, that something we ought to do is revisit the terms of this contract and look for, if it is to continue, perhaps something that makes better sense for us when this contract expires in 2023. If, if indeed we do renew. Okay, so that's all I have to say.
Steve Uring, followed by Bruce Silverstein.
Yeah, I did contact Jesse prior to the meeting to get a copy of the original contract. And there is a payment we get. I think we're going to get around $21,000 this year as a result of this thing, which is chump change. But, and I think it goes up to $25,000 by 2023. And I don't disagree. If we ever have to renegotiate this thing, I think we should get a little tougher in terms of what Malibu gets. And I guess, Jesse, that, when that money comes in, where does it go? Who, who, who gets that money?
The 20. The, the contract itself says it goes towards recreation programs, so it's something that we hold in a, it's not something that disappears. It's held in a a donation account that we keep.
This is, it goes to the city, so the city
Correct.
Access to that money. Okay.
Correct.
Second question is, and I think you may have answered it, there's a section in the contract that talks about fees that we can charge the triathlon. And I think you just said that the sheriff's fees, or any of the policing we have to do, that is put into fee for them to pay, right? They have to cover all those costs?
Correct. Yep, they, what we typically do is we will get a close estimate of what the fees will be for sheriffs and public safety, things like that part of the event, and they will pay those upfront. And then if we go over, if there's additional sheriff's fees, if they have to stay later, or there's a additional fees or charges that we didn't expect. there's a, uh, additional fees or charges that we didn't expect that came up, they pay those following the event. So yes, and they pay all of that through the city. So we know a lot of, we see all the payments come through with that as well, so.
No, I mean, am I safe in saying that any one of these extraneous costs that we incur, we're, we're not afraid to bill, bill them for those kinds of things?
Correct.
That's okay. Last question, and when I looked at the contract, there's, there are three option years after 2023. Uh, and, and I, I recall in those three option years, we get another 25 grand. Who triggers those option years? I mean,
So the, the agreement specifically states that there is an option for three additional one-year extensions if the city and the triathlon agree to do that. And that clause in the agreement actually says that it is subject to city council approval as well. So that would have to come to the city council for final approval for each of those years.
And welcome back to us.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce?
Um, so first of all, in response to Bill Sampson's remarks, and, and I think this has been the tenor of what we've been talking about. I, I asked to see the contracts and the amendments and all that before deciding what I was going to do here. This is much ado. Unfortunately, this one's much ado about nothing. The, the contract is the contract. Um, pardon my French, it's a pretty crappy contract, but it's been around for 10 years. We had nothing to do with it. Um, if and when there's a decision to go forward with another one, we definitely need to look at it much harder. We need, we need a better contract as well as better financial terms for the contract. But, but that's not what's here today. I, I think what's before us today doesn't even need to be done. It's really being done just out of an excess of caution to dot an I that isn't dotted and which probably legally doesn't even need to be dotted, but it's careful. So fine, let's do it. Um, the, I, I just, I would hope, I don't, I know we're not voting on this issue, but I would hope that when the TUP is created for this particular project, this particular event, it's created, um, appropriately, you know, error in the side of making sure things are done for the benefit of our residents and not inconvenience. Um, make sure, Bill's point about it being, um, basically a judgment proof foreign entity probably, um, which is what it is. We're stuck with that. Let, let's make sure we have adequate insurance. If we have an insurance right under the contract, which I think we do, let's make sure the insurance contract before the event occurs is a good and proper contract to the extent we have any discretion to review that. Um, the reason we find ourselves in the prop, in the situation we're in where a foreign entity, who knows what their financial strength is, that has acquired this, um, contract is because the contract has a, um, anti assignment provision, which requires our approval for an assignment, but it doesn't have a change of control provision, which means when you're dealing with an entity, if someone else acquires ownership of the entity, that's not an assignment. And, um, you know, this is a first year law school issue. Um, we need to have change of control provisions in our contracts. None of them do. We need to start having them going forward. We need to start being a professional city. Uh, but basically there's nothing going on here. This is just dotting an I. So I don't see how we, if we didn't dot the I, we'd be in the same place we're in. Dotting the I maybe gives us a little better position than we're in. So I'm all for this.
Thank you, Bruce. I see Bill Sampson is still in the room with his hand raised. Can we unmute Bill for a moment?
Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, Jesse said the highway won't be closed. If you live on Broad Beach Road or in the Broad Beach area or in Malibu West, the highway is effectively closed because the lanes that are left are open are the center lanes. And to get onto the highway, you must cross the participants running or bicycling through there, and you will not be permitted to do so by the sheriff's department because they will keep you from running over those people. Even the ones at the tail end whose times matter only to them, but we get to sit there. That says, that's the real problem. We cannot use the highway if we live in those areas. That's all I was, that's why I raised it. Thank you for giving me the extra time, Paul.
Thank you, Bill. Mikey?
Yeah, just quickly to Bill's point, that is, that is correct, but what I don't know, I would ask Jesse is what, as I understand the plan, is it the same this year? Or is it the same? Uh, can you comment on that? I actually don't remember if I knew the answer.
And the plan is familiar. It's pretty close to the same. There is a little bit of a change where they are holding a, I recall rightly, make sure I get this correct here. Um, or they're holding a championship series event on Saturday from 1:30 to four. But what this will do is it will actually tail down the time on Sunday. It's something that was similar to the, the Malibu triathlon and what they did where they added a something on a Saturday afternoon. It's already closed, but then shortened Sunday. So it would be uh, a similar, similar situation here. But yeah, the, the closure would essentially run from or the Saturday event, I should say, would run from 7:00 AM to four in the afternoon. And then Sunday would be seven to 12:30. So um, closures will be as short as possible. As far as the time goes, they're not closing at midnight the night before. They're, they're coming pretty close up to the start of the event and they close them as, as short as they can up to the start time of the race and then open them as quickly as they can as people start to fade off the, towards the end.
Thank you.
Have we ever been open and to, closed until seven at night before?
No, it was not seven, seven at night. I said, I meant 7:00 AM. I apologize. Seven
Seven AM to 4:00 PM?
I apologize.
Have we ever been closed until 4:00 PM before?
Adrian, I don't know if you're here, if you know the answer to that right off hand. Um, I believe it's usually three, not four. So it does extend for an hour.
I don't remember it being that long, but it was, it was long, it was, it was at least noon.
Well, and that's, that's the follow-up with that. And, and I should say, I have Brennan Linder here from the Malibu try to, to answer any questions beyond what I can answer. But I will say that typically as people, as the race starts to tail and there's people towards the end, they'll start to do what, like rolling openings as, as they safely can do so to, to open it up.
I'm going to re, let Bruce speak and then I'm going to call on Brennan Linder. Bruce, you're muted.
Thank you. Going to move that we approve this, but with, that we also at the same time give direction to staff to utilize whatever discretionary authority it has within the confines of this contract to minimize the inconvenience to the residents of Malibu while at the same time allowing this event to go forward in good faith pursuant to the contract.
I'm going to second that and then I'm going to recognize Brennan Linder, who apparently represents this group to tell us what he's going to do to make this a more livable solution. Brennan, are you there?
Yes, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I won't go into a lot of the other issues because it really comes down to traffic and impact on this. And 2019 was the first year that what was called a long course was added, which was double the distance of the Olympic course. And that's why there were such longer traffic closures, but we've completely eliminated that so that the closures will be very similar to what's occurred on Sunday will be occurring on Saturday. And what that means is that all the cyclists will be off the road by 10:45 AM. So there, there's nothing that's extending on PCH any longer after that. And so I know why I can say things return to normal, but they start to ease down so that people can be getting out of their residences as well as driveways. Um, speaking to the one resident on Broad Beach, I will reach out with the LA County Sheriff's to see what their metering policy is, and that's getting, you know, vehicles across the course. Because he is correct at times that when there is too many cyclists, it's impossible to get across. But one would think that at a point when there is space between cyclists and it's safe to do so that these residents can get out. And then thirdly on this is, I'll check as well too. Currently, right now, we have 22 LA County Sheriff officers, staff for this, but if there is a specific intersection that anyone on the council would like us to address, I'd be more than happy to get additional staff out there for, I know, uh, my goal is to actually minimize the impact as much as possible. And then the last item, just to clarify to this super league race, you know, that Jesse talked about, it's actually all within Zuma Beach parking lot. Nothing comes out onto the highway. So there's no road closures going on, on the highway out after, I would say around 11 o'clock.
Okay. I, I hope you'll meet privately with, uh, with Mr. Sampson. Uh, can we, we have a motion in a second. Kelsey, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Uring? Councilmember Uring, you're muted.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We now, for those who tuned in late, item four A has been continued to September the 13th. We're going to go directly to item four B, which is a review of the 2021, 2029 housing element draft update study. This is actually a study session. So we have a staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Crisanti and council members. Tonight we'll be discussing the draft housing element, uh, which is required to be updated per state law. I will turn this presentation over to the city's consultant in just a second, but, uh, first I, as a quick review, I'd like to go over the staff recommendation. Next slide, please. The staff recommendation tonight is that the city council receive this staff presentation as well as public comments. Uh, provide comments and direction to staff on any revisions you'd like to see made to the draft. Um, and to authorize staff to submit the draft housing element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, so that they can begin their review. This is not an adoption of the housing element at this time or a final approval of the document. Um, that will occur later. Um, and our consult, our consultant will discuss that. Um, so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over. Um, and I'd like to introduce John Douglas, who will finish this presentation.
John, are you in the room?
I am. Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. Uh, what I'd like to do is walk through a few slides and summarize this document, this housing element that's before you tonight for the study session. If we could go to the next slide, uh, I'll begin with an overview of the housing element. As you know, the housing element is part of your general plan and there are extensive legal requirements that have been established by the state. Uh, in recent years, particularly, the state legislature has declared that California has a housing crisis. And so the legislature has been quite active in passing new laws to try to stimulate the production of housing in the state. Uh, every city within the Southern California region is required to prepare an update to the housing element for the 21 to 2029 period, looking out eight years ahead. We refer to this as the sixth housing element cycle. And one of the important things, uh, about the housing element that does not apply to most other elements of your general plan is the role of the state, the oversight that the state has, the state legislature has authorized the State Department of Housing and Community Development to review local housing elements and issue their opinions as to whether they comply with state law. If the state HCD finds that the city's housing element does comply with state law, that's referred to as certification of the housing element. Next slide, please. Uh, there are four guiding principles in my mind that, uh, that the housing element is intended to address. The first has to do with maintaining and improving the city's existing supply of housing. At the same time, we are required to look out eight years into the future at the housing need that will accommodate the future residents of the city. Uh, we also required to look at potential constraints to housing, and these are constraints of, of all sorts, but primarily we focus on those things that the city has control over. Primarily things like zoning and development standards. Uh, fourthly, we're required to look at fair housing and the city is required to use its municipal powers to the extent possible in order to further fair housing in the city. Next slide, please. The regional housing needs assessment arena has received a lot of attention over the last couple of years. Uh, the arena is the process by which each city is assigned its share of the region's housing needs for the next eight-year period. And this process begins with the state housing of, and community development department assigning a total housing need for Southern California to the SCAG region, the Southern California Association of Governments. And then in turn, SCAG, uh, goes through a lengthy process where that regional total is assigned to individual cities and counties. Malibu's assigned share of the regional housing need for the next eight years is 79 housing units, and those are distributed in four different income categories that you see on this chart. What's important about, uh, the distribution of housing units is that housing in the very low and low income categories uh, must be satisfied through the city's zoning regulations that allow high density housing. And for small cities like Malibu, high density means 20 units per acre. What's very important to keep in mind about these arena uh, assigned units is that the city is not legally required to achieve this production. It's a planning target. And so the city is required to demonstrate that its plans and zoning regulations could accommodate this amount of development. But the city is not punished or penalized if the development does not happen because the city does not have total control, of course, over the development process. And there are many other players, uh, whose, uh, cooperation uh, and active engagement is necessary. It, you might think of housing as being a team sport. Many different, uh, parties are required in order to, uh, actually produce housing on the ground. Next slide, please. So in the next couple of slides, what I'd like to do is just briefly walk through what is in the housing element document. Uh, the housing element is an update. So we are starting with the city's current housing element was adopted back in 2013. And an update is intended to, uh, fine tune those things where there have been some changes in circumstances. Maybe some changes in state law that require the city to do new things or different things. Uh, maybe some other changes that, uh, uh, require the city to make some modifications to its, uh, plans and regulations and so forth. And so the housing element document looks very similar to the existing housing element. It's divided into five chapters. There's an introductory chapter. There is a needs assessment that looks at the demographics of the community, the housing conditions and so forth. There's a chapter on resources for housing and opportunities that the city has as at its disposal to try to encourage the production of housing. Chapter 7.4 looks at constraints. And as I mentioned earlier, those are primarily things that the city has control over, such as the general plan, the local coastal program, the zoning regulations, uh, procedures, uh, uh, permits, fees, and those types of things. And the most important chapter of the housing element is the housing plan. That is the chapter where the city describes the programs that it intends to implement over the next eight years in order to try to address the housing needs of the community. There are also four appendices to the housing element. The first is an evaluation of the current housing element to, to look critically at what the previous policies and programs were and what has been accomplished and use that exercise in order to update and improve the programs for this next planning period. There's an inventory of land where housing could be built based on current zoning regulations, and that's done at a parcel specific level. There's a summary of public participation that the city has followed over this process. And I would just mention that tonight is the third public meeting that's been held on this housing element update. And we are about halfway through the process and there will be at least two additional public hearings. And so, so there's, uh, uh, there's much more, uh, to come in the way of public participation. And finally, there's a list of acronyms. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do now is just very quickly walk through the programs that are in this draft housing element that's before you tonight. Most of these programs are a continuation of the current housing element with maybe some minor modifications. And so I'm going to uh, only focus on those things where there is, is a substantial change to what's in the current housing element. So the first group of programs has to do with preserving and improving the city's existing housing stock. And this is basically a continuation of existing activities such as code enforcement, uh, trying to facilitate rebuild, rebuilding after fires and so forth. Uh, let's go to the next slide and I'll talk about the programs dealing with new housing development. And in these programs, there are a couple of new things that I want to mention specifically. Uh, the first program has to do with the arena, the regional housing needs assessment, and that is uh, uh, calling for the city to actively participate in the arena process each time that the housing element is updated. And then in terms of, uh, actually encouraging the production of housing, the city has a two-part strategy. The first strategy has to do with encouraging the development of accessory dwelling units. And the housing element calls for a code amendment to update the city's ADU regulations in conformance with recent changes to state law. And the second part of the strategy, uh, strategy has to do with facilitating new affordable housing development. And that has to do with the affordable housing overlay zone that was and that has to do with the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone that was adopted about eight years ago for the city. And those are areas that are specifically targeted for the production of affordable housing. There's also a code amendment proposed having to do with streamlining the development process and assisting affordable housing. That has to do with the Density Bonus Ordinance. Density Bonus is a provision of state law that requires the city to allow higher density and other incentives when a developer voluntarily agrees to include affordable units in the development. And also, as part of that program is the the city's upgrading of its permit software to try to streamline the development review process. Next slide, please. The third group of programs has to do with fair housing and providing assistance to lower-income persons and persons with special needs. On the topic of affirmatively furthering fair housing, there is a code amendment that's proposed in the housing element, and this is to respond to recent changes in state law regarding supportive housing and also low-barrier navigation centers. These are both specific types of housing that are targeted at persons with disabilities or persons who may be homeless or at risk of homelessness, and state law calls out specific things that cities must do as part of their zoning regulations to try to minimize constraints on the production of that type of housing. There is also a program for continuing to monitor the production of housing, and as you recall, each year your staff brings to you an annual report looking at what's been accomplished over the past year with regard to the housing element policies and programs, and that's a continuation of the existing requirements in state law. So let's go to the next slide, and I'll just summarize the next steps in this process. As I mentioned, we're probably about halfway through the housing element update process. Your staff and I have been working on this for the last several months now. There was a public workshop conducted back in the late spring. Your Planning Commission conducted a public study session last month. This is the third meeting tonight. If it is the pleasure of the council to authorize staff to submit this draft document to state HCD, every city is required to submit the draft to HCD for review for a sixty-day period. After we receive back HCD's comments on the housing element, then there will be another round of public meetings with the Planning Commission and back to your council to consider final adoption of the housing element. After your council adopts the housing element, then that adopted element must be submitted again to HCD for a second round of review. And if they find that the housing element is in full compliance with state law, then, as I mentioned earlier, that will be considered the certification of the housing element. So that concludes my presentation. On the next slide, I'd just like to show where people can go for more information on the housing element. And there is a city website that's been set up that has a a variety of materials and draft documents and so forth. And if anyone has any questions, they can submit those to Ms. Kendall, the city's project manager for the housing element. And so, again, to to close, next slide, and the recommended action is for you to receive any public comments that there may be to discuss, provide your comments and questions to staff. And if it's your pleasure to authorize staff to submit this draft document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for review, I want to emphasize that there's no action before you tonight to finally approve this document. This is just a interim step in the process to continue the review of the housing element and forward it to HCD. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Do we have any members of the public who have old speaker slips on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers signed up. They are Terry Davis and Jamie Francis. We'll hear from Terry Davis first.
Thank you. Terry, are you in the room?
I am indeed. Can you hear me?
You can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. And I'd like to thank Mr. Douglas for that presentation. I did my darndest to attempt to review the staff report, but Mr. Douglas actually brought up right at the very beginning what my major concern is, and that is that there is no legal requirement for the city to follow through with any of this. There's no, there are no repercussions. Councilmember Silverstein, you mentioned that you thought the the city has been a pro-building, and I would have to agree with you on one area there, and that is certainly for those members of the community who are well-to-do. And I believe I read somewhere that there are probably overalls, I don't know if it's Los Angeles County, perhaps sixty percent over the need of the well-to-do, and forty to fifty percent under the need for those in need of affordable housing. For as long as I've been in Malibu, I know we've been discussing affordable housing, and that is for our seniors, for teachers, for firefighters, and for those with vouchers. I reached out to the outreach team right now to find out how many of our unhoused have vouchers, current vouchers, and there are three. And these three people have had these vouchers since Woolsey. That is almost three years. That is how long it takes to to find landlords that will take these vouchers. I'm basically asking Malibu not to not to find the loopholes, because the loopholes in in these housing elements are are big to drive trucks through. And that is how, for so many years, we've not had to follow through on housing for the for low and middle and the unhoused. Where I lived the last, prior to moving to Malibu, I saw very large, beautiful, affordable housing units being taken down, garden apartments with lawns, and this was affordable housing that was replaced with huge border-to-border-to-border-to-border apartments. And I can assure you that the number of people that were displaced by that by that building were not rehoused in in the in the new structure. So even the developers get away with that. And I know we have grants that I think it's the CBDG community.
Terry, that's your time.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Who else do we have, please?
Our final speaker is Jamie Francis, and we don't see Jamie's name in the meeting, but we believe he or she is on the phone, so we'll try unmuting the phone number we have.
I am. I am. Thank you. I'm calling from my phone because not all of us have Zoom, but thank you so much for doing that. Good evening, council. I totally agree with Terry. I wholeheartedly appreciate her views. I am a recipient. I am a Section Eight recipient who has a voucher, who has been trying for ten years to move into the city of Malibu. It is my right, with asthma and now with coronavirus and having pre-existing conditions, to have access to the ocean and not millionaires who use ADUs as an excuse to basically find a way to incentivize and also increase the property values. I am sorry, Councilmember Silverstein. There is not any housing whatsoever. If you look at a former article, it was a homeless man who had the grace of a ranch owner to basically utilize his voucher, and it made national headlines. That is disgraceful. I am letting you know for ten years and four installments or iterations of this housing element that nothing has been accomplished. The Coastal Commission should be aware of this. SCAG should be aware of this. And Terry is absolutely right. There is no repercussions for the city council or the city of Malibu. Honestly, there should be. Because I should not have to wait ten to twenty years to move into your city with a voucher. I don't need to worry about affordable housing being built, even though there should be. I am in the low-income category. I am chronically disabled with fibromyalgia, with multiple sclerosis and asthma. And it is my right to have clean ocean air and marine layer in the city of Malibu, and I am entitled to be one of your residents. And I shouldn't be waiting decades upon decades. It is disgraceful. There's more turnover with the city council than there is with people moving in with their vouchers with our slim to none. I appreciate Mr. Douglas by giving an assessment. The city council basically should be finding ways because they should be also encountering reprimands from the state of California. Governor Newsom has said that Section Eight is the law of the land. No landlord can refuse it. The county voucher is sixteen hundred dollars. Well, guess what? City of Malibu implement and make sure those mandates of us with the vouchers are not priced out, but are brought into the community, and you accept it, and you will say this is our requirement. Because the county and the state is saying this is what we have, and you cannot be dismissing these people as low-class, as second-class. So for a council member to say that, oh, with looking at available or opportunities and everything has to be assessed, we've had housing elements. We have had environmental impact reports. We have had four councils work. It comes to preferential, okay? You've been afforded to live in the city. Now it is my turn to move into the city limits. And if you cannot do it, then the state should be holding the city accountable and either using litigation, suing the city, or finding ways to mandate that you are in compliance. No exception.
Jamie, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mikey has his hand up, followed by Karen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the speakers. First of all, I want to thank Justine. I want to thank John Douglas. Terry, thank you. Jamie, thanks for your passionate talk there. I think complex issue, obviously, in the city of Malibu. Complex everywhere, I'm sure. When I was first on the Planning Commission, one of the first things that came before me had to do with affordable housing and zoning. And I didn't understand. This is years ago. This is like nine, ten years ago. It confused me, and I asked a bunch of questions and found out, well, yeah, we have to legally sort of identify some land for affordable housing. But anyone who looks at that map knows that that will never be developed as affordable housing. So kind of smoke and mirrors with no repercussions to Jamie's point. Moving forward, I, John, I guess this question is maybe for you. I understand that there will be more state repercussions in the future. Can you comment on that?
Yes, council member. Of course, this is a very complex topic, and you know, trying to cover everything in a short period of time leaves out a lot of details. When I said that the city is not required to build housing, that's because the state establishes requirements that the city zone for housing and make it possible to build housing. But because the city doesn't have control over the development process, then cities aren't required to achieve their assigned housing numbers. That said, there have been some recent changes to state law that create additional incentives and streamline process for affordable housing developments if cities are not achieving their assigned share.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know, maybe this is for Justine, but what is our plan on the codes we have to update to be in compliance?
We don't have a schedule at this point for updating those, but that is on my list of things to get to right away to make sure that we're in compliance as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you for that. And I guess this question, back to John, in a second for I don't understand one of the numbers in the report, and that's the number of ADUs that were, now I forget, the potential new ADUs. The number in there says thirty-two. How, where does that number come from? And it's a mixture of very low up to, you know, different ranges. How do we have a potential for new ADUs listed at thirty-two? It's on page thirty-seven.
Yes, and I think very quickly background, the city is required to demonstrate that it has the capacity in order to achieve those RENA numbers that have been assigned to the city, and that capacity can be demonstrated in two ways. First is property where housing can be built, vacant land or or land that could be redeveloped. And the second way is through accessory dwelling units. And the state establishes basically a formula for estimating what the future production of ADUs is likely to be. And what they say is look at your ADU production over the last three years, and then take the average of those three years, and then project that forward over the next eight years. So for the last three years, the average has been four ADUs per year, and so times eight years, that's where the thirty-two comes from.
Oh, okay, that's fascinating. So while we haven't adopted our ADU codes yet, and while we had the Woolsey fire, so we might be giving a sort of an interesting number there, it seems, but that's just the formula, and that's the way it works. I'm assuming, because I don't think, you're probably right. There's swaths of Malibu that had no real development when they burned down. That's my guess. I guess the last thing I want to say is it's not a big, you know, it's known to most people to pay any attention. Karen and I, since elected, have been looking to bring forward an affordable housing project. I think in our mind, we are aiming in that area, people that work could live here, firemen, teachers, people that serve us in different businesses. I don't know how yet, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know enough how to address other housing needs. It's clearly in my mind. It is a difficult project. We do have, Jamie mentioned, we do have CBDG grant money available. We are, the city council voted to, you know, keep that as an option to attempt to use it. And towards that end, Karen and I actually have another meeting on it on Wednesday with Tara from Community Corp. in Santa Monica that does affordable housing in more places than just Santa Monica, and does a great job in the beautiful buildings. So those are my, those are my comments for now, and thank you very much, John, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mikey. Karen, followed by Bruce.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I want to thank John Douglas and Justine and and our public speakers. And clearly, there's a need. I'll state the obvious. The city doesn't control the market. But clearly, there is a need for affordable housing here. At the very least, as Mikey was saying, and Terry, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the other speaker's name, seniors, the disabled workforce housing. There are a lot of people who could and would live here if an affordable housing project could be executed. And in my conversations with people, I just want to reiterate here because there's been some confusion or misassumptions. This affordable housing, workforce housing, this is not any kind of a homeless shelter, alternative living, a sleeping location or anything like that. So for anybody who might assume they're the same thing, they're not. Yeah, I'm looking forward to continue to work on this with Mikey. We started shortly after we got elected, and there's work to be done here, and I think we can do it. So I just wanted to say that this is this is something I'm excited about. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul. All right, so I watched the virtual workshop that was run a little while ago. It was well-run, very informative. I learned a lot then, and then it was reinforced tonight. So I commended Mr. Douglas back then. I'll do it again tonight. That was a very clear and helpful presentation. It helps me. I just want to, I think this has been said now multiple times. It sort of bears repeating, assuming it's accurate. Malibu is not required to build or to actually affirmatively facilitate the construction of low-cost housing. Just have laws in place that permit it. Is that accurate, Mr. Douglas?
The requirement's a little bit more than that. It's to use the city's municipal powers to the extent that it's feasible to do so, to encourage the production of housing. So that, in addition to zoning, that would include things like coordinating with interested developers and helping to expedite permit review and those types of things.
Okay. I have a question also. Can housing requirements be transferred for consideration like carbon credits?
Between jurisdictions, you mean?
Yes.
No.
Okay. And I think we should seriously explore the use of A- And I, I think we should seriously explore the use of ADUs, including to the extent legally feasible requirements for low to moderate income rentals in the ADUs. That's something that I think we need to explore. I want to comment, the recommendation surprised me tonight, the part about authorizing the submission of this. I'm not opposed to that, but that wasn't on the agenda. And I would have read the housing element with much more care if I had understood we were doing something more than receiving it. In the past, I've asked what the legal consequence of receiving something is. And I was accurately told that just means we put it in a city file. Thank you for doing it. This potentially has legal ramifications because we're engaged in a process with other agencies. I don't know that my review, careful review, would add anything, but we weren't told that we were going to be doing that tonight. I have had conversations with the same affordable housing developers with which Mikey and Karen have met. I could be mistaken, but it's my understanding from those conversations that they cannot lawfully accomplish what Mikey and Karen are talking about tonight, which is workforce housing or housing for people in Malibu that work in Malibu that can't afford to live in Malibu. They can't make those kinds of discriminatory decisions once they construct the low-cost housing and put it up and open it up. It's, you can't discriminate based on jurisdiction or where people are working. It's, it's a income qualification, full stop. They also, as I understand it, want to build more than we're required to let them build, which is, which will be an issue or may be an issue when and if they ever get around to coming before us. So just to make that clear, they're not just looking to do what our housing requirement requires of us, but they're looking to do more than that. Obviously, it makes sense. They're capitalists. Terry Davis is concerned that there's no legal requirement, no repercussions. As a city council person, I'm actually in the opposite vote. I'm glad to hear that there are no specific legal requirements or repercussions. I believe we should be doing what the law requires. I believe no more, no less unless, unless we get a mandate from the residents that they want us to do more. I believe in not doing more. I would love to see a senior living center, which I understand could go a long way towards solving this. I've had conversations with some people about that. I would even consider supporting doing that on the property that SCE destroyed if the owner were interested in that. Mr. Francis offered interesting legal arguments that I don't think square of what we're being told by our consultant. I understand we are at this point in time in compliance with the law. If Mr. Francis doesn't like that, his gripe is misplaced. It's not with us, it's with the law. I do have to say that his comments and some of others remind me of debates between Bernie Sanders wing of the Democratic Party, which is the progressive far-left minority and the rest of the Democratic Party and the entirety of the Republican Party. We live in a country that is founded on something called capitalism. This isn't a socialist country. We have certain laws that have been adopted that are steering us in that direction that we have to comply with, but we don't have to go further than we're required. And I don't, I don't support going any further than we're required in this instance. So I don't know what others have to think about the authorizing submitting this. I don't know if you all read it carefully enough to be comfortable with that. I'm certainly comfortable that Mr. Douglas has the knowledge to put together a proper documentation. So I'm probably at the end of the day going to support that. But it did concern me that, that took me by surprise when I saw that recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. I have my hand raised so that I can speak next. If Steve wants to speak, I'll let him speak ahead of me. But let's, I have a couple of questions for John. When you submit this, how, they'll keep it for 60 days and then give it back to you to make whatever revisions are necessary and then we'll be asked to submit it at that point? Is that correct?
Yes, and this all falls under the heading of certification, state certification of the housing element. I want to emphasize that there, there is no formal legal requirement for the city council to take action at this point to direct staff to submit the document to HCD. The law does require that the city submit a draft to HCD, but there's, there's no requirement that the city council take a formal action if you follow the distinction. And, and so, yes, and so, so back to the process of certification. The state legislature has delegated the authority to the state housing department to review cities' housing elements and issue opinions as to whether they fully comply with the law. And that is called the review for certification and it's a two-step process. So we're first required to submit a draft housing element. Then the state sends us back a letter pointing out any deficiencies that they see. And then the planning commission and your council is required to consider HCD's comments when you finally adopt the housing element. And that typically involves making revisions to this document that's before you tonight and, and addressing the comments that the state sends us back. So then after that, that revised document is considered by your council and ultimately adopted. Then it goes back for the state for the final review and a decision whether or not to certify that document as fully compliant with state law.
When is the draft due and when is the final due?
There, there is no specific date on, on due for the draft, but there is, in state law, there is a due date of October 15th for the housing element to be adopted for this cycle. I want to emphasize that that is a due date and many, if not most, cities do not make that due date.
All right. As I look through this, I see a few corrections and I'm wondering if you, if you can go through these for just a second. My first thought is that the population numbers, I see we're not using the census because it's not available yet. And it doesn't sound like the dates that you have are going to allow the, the census data to be incorporated here. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and let me just say sort of a general statement about data. Data is a snapshot in time and so we're always playing catch-up. And it doesn't, it doesn't affect any policies in the housing element.
Okay. When I looked at 7.2.2, which is called overcrowding, I was distressed to learn that although I felt I grew up in a fairly prosperous household, we were overcrowded because my brother and I shared a room and two of my sisters shared a room. And I realized from reading it that that's a judgment that's made by HCD, but it seems silly to incorporate it. Under 7.2.2D overpayment, I have a problem with the second sentence of that, which reads, although homeowners enjoy income and property tax deductions and other benefits, dot, dot, dot. State and local tax deduction has been gone for about three years, if I'm correct. What do you know about it coming back that I don't?
I don't have anything to report on that.
Okay, is this, I'm imagining that this, part of this is just a redo of what the previous eight years ago report?
It's an update to the previous report.
And can we take out the sentence talking about homeowners enjoying income and property tax deductions?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead to, on page 7.2.5, I'm disturbed to discover somewhat, somewhat belatedly that I've been elderly for a while. According to these classifications is, is, why is the federal government trying to make me feel bad?
I don't think I have a good answer for that, Mayor.
And then we're going to move on to 7.3.2. We talked to the city's approval of the Patriot Homes overlay condominium project. Can you advise me of where that is?
I'm going to defer to city staff on that project.
Justine, do you know where it is?
Yes, that was a project approved in 2003, I believe completed in 2015 at 22065 PCH. It was an eight-unit condominium building.
I'm shocked. As long as I've been in this business, I don't know anything about it. So I'm going to have to go by and look at it. Thank you. All right. Steve Euring, do you have anything to say on this?
Yeah, just, I mean, I appreciate all the comments and the work Mr. Douglas did. You know, the, one of the things we're going to have to think about when we get these ADUs is to make sure they don't turn into short-term rental properties. So just keep them in the back of your list someplace. I'm just wondering, John, you know, the fact that we've lost 400 homes, does that have any, any impact on this, what the state wants us to do?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
All right. Are any further comments? I see Bruce's hand raised and then Mikey's.
Yeah, just two questions, actually, to follow up on Steve's question. And you may have answered this already before, but what, does the dramatic drop in population have any impact on the final analysis?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. And am I correct in understanding that it's, it's your view from, from, from where you sit, that as this is prepared now, obviously, we're going to get comments, but we're in legal compliance at this moment?
It is a fact that the city is in legal compliance because the housing element that was adopted back in 2013 is still in effect. And it was found to be in compliance by the state.
And where's your level of confidence that the revised one's going to be found to be in compliance?
That is a good question. It is much tougher this time and cities are struggling to meet all of the state's demands. I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay, thank you.
Mikey?
22065, if I'm not mistaken, is the residence is a carbon beach, those extremely expensive land side. I don't know if they're condos or what they are, but they're, they took forever to sell because they're massively expensive.
Yeah, well, apparently they gave us an in-lug fee of $30,000 a unit. And I'm guessing that's somewhere in the city's balance sheet that would indicate that there's $1,880,000, is that correct? Does anybody know? Okay.
I can't, I can't speak to where the money is exactly. That's not my job, but that funding is being used to, as the budget for the update of this draft.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Justine. So Steve McClary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick clarification. The city has not yet received any preliminary or final numbers from, from the census for the 2020 numbers. We expect that we will probably see something towards the end of September. I know that there's been some numbers circulating around. I do not know the accuracy or the source of those. Again, they may be correct, but, but just wanted to note that to date, the city has not received any official census numbers yet that indicate any population changes for Malibu. So we are eager to see those and when we get that information, we will pass it along to council. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to receive this? Or do we need even make a motion? John?
I will move that if we need to.
A second if we need to.
You can make a motion to receive a file and direct staff to forward the housing element onto HCD.
I think that's what Karen said.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelsey, will you be kind enough to call the roll?
Councilmember Farr?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Gristanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mayor, do you think we could do a quick break, maybe?
Well, you took the words right out of my mouth. So it is according to my clock, it's 7:08:42. So can we meet back here at 8:52? So I believe we're about to be cautioned to turn off our cameras and microphones.
You were about to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Okay. According to my phone, it's still eight fifty-two. I want to thank everybody for coming back very promptly. So let's we have before us item four C, which is a resolution declaring the existence of a local emergency and establishing a program for reducing the risk of fires associated with individuals living unhoused and otherwise engaged in unpermitted and unregulated camping. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and good nee- good evening, council members. As you know, the entire city of Malibu sits within a very high fire hazard severity zone, which is a designation given to us by CAL FIRE based on our topography, vegetation, fire history, and other factors. Currently, we're looking at what could be historic fire season. Our current live fuel moisture is fifty-seven percent. The live fuel moisture is one of the key indicators for the risk of a fire. And fifty-seven percent is far drier than past years at this time, and even lower than the sixty percent that CAL FIRE considers critical. For comparison, last year at this time, we were at seventy percent. We didn't reach fifty-seven percent until October. So with each, uh, passing week, uh, the vegetation is just gonna get drier. So coupled with this situation is also an increasing number of people experiencing homelessness who are living in our hillsides. Unfortunately, we've had seventeen fires associated with unhoused individuals since the beginning of this year. And the risk of vegetation fires started by warming and cooking fires will only increase in the fall when the nights are cooler and Santa, uh, Santa Ana winds may be blowing. This situation combined with this historically dry vegetation poses an extreme threat to life and property. I also want to point out that the unhoused individuals living in the hillsides are also at significant risk of loss of life due to being trapped by fires, since they're not likely to receive warning, the traditional warning and evacuation notices that we send out. So due to this extreme fire risk condition and threat to life and property, it's recommended that the city council declare the existence of a local emergency and establish a program to reduce the risk of fires started by unhoused individuals and review a proposed amendment to the city's camping ordinance. Both of these proposals are the result of an extensive collaborative effort between councilmembers Silverstein, Pearson, city attorney, city staff, and I'm sure many others beyond the immediate meetings that we had last week. The resolution before you directs staff to work with the Sheriff's Department Homeless Outreach Services team, also called the host team, as well as our own Malibu Homeless Outreach Team to clear encampments and then keep them clear, while also ensuring that these efforts do not criminalize do not criminalize people just for the state of being homeless, and we provide unhoused individuals with access to services and options for housing. The resolution also asks that staff comes back with a progress report in thirty days, and then every sixty days after that. The resolution also directs that staff request the county to expand its August tenth motion that prohibits encampments in the very high fire hazard severity zone to apply the, to the entire county and not just the unincorporated sections. So now the proposed amendment to the camping ordinance is being brought to you for nearly the same reasons as the resolution, which includes the extreme threat to fire caused by encampments. The city currently has a camping ordinance. However, due to concerns about the Martin v Boise decision, a revised ordinance has been drafted to enable the city to enforce restrictions on camping in Malibu without being in conflict with this court decision. Excuse me. The Boise decision prohibits imposing criminal penalties on homeless individuals for sitting, sleeping, or lying outside on public property if they lack access to shelter. The proposed draft ordinance would prohibit camping in the following locations: public parks, public beaches, public streets, excuse me, vacant or undeveloped property in which camping is prohibited, or any land designated by the Fire Chief City Manager as a fire risk area, including areas near, wild, urban, interface, and brush areas. In addition, prohibited camping activities that are included in the draft ordinance include starting or building a fire for the purposes of warming, cooking, or or other purposes, discharge, discharge of wastewater, other, uh, disposable trash or garbage in any manner not expressly permitted by law, urinating or defecating in locations not designated for that purpose, erecting or using a tent hut shelter, or use of camping paraphernalia such as cots, hammocks, and unpermitted cooking equipment. More specifically, no person shall engage in any camping activity on public property that is within an area that the city manager, public safety manager, city council determines from time to time to constitute an extreme fire danger. Also, not permitted within twenty-five feet from the public entrance to any place of business, within two hundred feet of a residence, and within fifteen hundred feet of any daycare center, public or private elementary, vocational, junior high, high school, or college. Her absent circumstances that pose an immediate threat to the public health, safety, and welfare, the ordinance will not be enforced against individuals based solely upon the fact that they are sitting, lying, or sleeping on public property, when such individuals do not have access to adequate temporary shelter. The council is requested to provide additional input on the draft ordinance before it is brought back for a first reading. The council may wish to consider a policy that the ordinance is only enforced after providing or confirming that the person violating the prohibition has no transportation to an alternate place to sleep, has no access to a form of temporary shelter by voucher or other method, and does not have access to a publicly owned campground and ability to pay for it. This policy would be consistent with the Martin v Boise ruling, and it ensures the city does not criminalize sitting, lying, or sleeping in public when a person has no access to temporary shelter. The council should also direct staff to confirm that the distance and locational restrictions contained in the proposed ordinance leaves an adequate portion of the city, or a person lacking access to adequate shelter will not be subject to criminal penalties for the act of lying, sitting, or sleeping in the city of Malibu. This completes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Susan. I see Bruce's hand is raised, uh, although we're supposed to hear public comment at this point. So I'm gonna hear public, ask for public comment, and then Bruce will be first in line to speak. Do we have anyone waiting? Kelsey?
Yes, we have five speakers for this item. They are Kay Gabbard, Scott Dietrich, Joe Drummond, Bill Sampson, and Jefferson Wagner. We'll hear from Kay Gabbard first.
Thank you. Are you available, Kay?
Kay, you should have a pop-up asking to unmute.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, city council members. My name is Kay Gabbard, and I'm here to speak in support of Resolution twenty-one forty-nine. I want to thank everyone for their hard work in putting together what I think is a fair and equitable start to keeping our community safe and our unhoused friends treated with dignity and respect. While getting these folks out of the high fire areas is a high priority, this action must be followed by an intense commitment to face-to-face services if we intend to keep them from just going back or just setting up on the beach. We know that it can take as many as fifteen interactions or more with one unhoused person to get them to begin to trust that we have something to offer them that will actually get them the medical, mental health, occupational, or housing help that they desperately need. We know that most of them have been disappointed and let down by family and the system too many times to count or even begin to understand. But we also know that our outreach team of social workers, our street medicine team, our sheriffs, our local faith-based organizations and nonprofits, and the newly formed Task Force on Homelessness will be ready to actively engage these newly displaced unhoused and help pick up the pieces of their lives. I know from working next to our teams on the street that the, that the reported number of these people, of people these teams have helped actually get off the streets is only a fraction of the total number of people they have helped in ways we will never know. Someone to listen to your rambling and disconnected life story, a medication you need to keep going prescribed by the street doctor, a thirty-minute session with the psychiatrist on the street after you've been given a substantial lunch by the lunch team, a pair of shoes, help in replacing your lost birth certificate, social security card, or driver's license. It all counts. It all says we care about you. We hear you. We can help you. There is no single root cause of homelessness, so, so there is no silver bullet solution and no one well-thought-out resolution that will end it. Keeping our community safe from fires and health threats is critical, but for a durable solution, we can't just move them out. We also have to engage those who just might be ready to take the next step closer to a life of dignity because there is little dignity in living as an invisible on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Who do we have next, Kelsey?
Next, we have Scott Dietrich.
Hi, Scott.
Let's see. Hi, Paul, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, sir. Um, we've got about forty-five days until the Santa Anas start blowing. And when that happens, the entire city, and that includes those who are unhoused, are really at risk, and those who are in the brush areas are really at risk. And Susan stated this. This is why we desperately need this ordinance. I do like some of the suggestions that, uh, Craig Hill made that I think make it better. But we've got to face the fact, it's not easy. We want, I think everybody wants to help these folks. But a little tiny city in Malibu, we don't have the resources to do it. There's a lot of substance abuse. There's a lot of mental illness. And there's ninety-one percent or something, if you believe the statistics coming out of Torrance, that, uh, ninety-one percent don't want any help at all. But what we've got to do is we've got to have the courage to stop enabling people, stop allowing them to live in the brush where they will light fires, and those fires often will spread, and in a Santa Ana, um, Susan gave the statistics on how many fires we've had, like every four days, it seems. Uh, we've got to protect the people. I don't want to be in the situation that the guys up in paradise found themselves in. Because five years before the campfire that cost over eighty people their lives, they were warned they didn't have enough highway to evacuate that town if a fire approached. Nobody did anything. We're in a position to do something. I wish we had the resources in Malibu to really help these people, but it's a bigger issue than a little city of under ten thousand people. So yes, please pass this. The homeless task force is gonna struggle to try to find solutions. Um, but we need the help of the county and the cities around us, and they don't seem very anxious to do that. Um, so please pass this. Look at a couple of the suggestions Craig has made. And for God's sake, let's not anybody burn fire. That would be horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Who else do we have? Kelsey?
Next, we have Joe Drummond.
Hi, Joe. Are you in the room?
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi. Honorable Mayor Grisanti and City Council, I'm here to support the declaration of a local emergency adopting Resolution twenty-one dash forty-nine and consider the proposed camping ordinance. Thanks to everyone for all their hard work on this matter. Malibu has experienced seven fires attributed to transient vagrants, according to our public safety manager. She also stated that we are in conditions that put us at even higher wildfire risks. With added Santa Ana, et cetera, conditions, any one of those fires could have grown into the next will be fire or worse. For over the last four months or so, there have been illegal campers just above moon shadows. They are still up there on the side of the cliff today. They are still up there on the side of the cliff today. Near our homes in Big Rock on private property, where apparently the city has tried to reach the owner to obtain a letter of agency, but still nothing has been done. There's beds, there's tents, and umbrellas up. The current actions made by the city in the past ordinances are a step in the right direction, but they fail to address the fact that Cal Fire has designated the entirety of the city of Malibu as a very high fire hazard severity zone. And there is insufficient time and resources to locate transient encampments, evict the inhabitants, and remediate the fire hazard conditions when we are in or approaching a red flag situation. Please declare an emergency situation in Malibu resulting from the severe dangers to health, safety, and welfare to the community posed by unhoused individuals living in the very fire hazardous severity zone and declaring the city's desire that the LASD strictly enforce the city's no camping ordinance. An emergency situation should also allow bypass of the letter of agency necessary to access private property as well as make those negligent owners be billed for the cleanup. Chief Villanueva has recently moved two hundred homeless individuals in Venice into housing, so resources are available. The time has come to take aggressive action needed to protect our health, safety, and welfare. This includes City Council taking the necessary action to compel LASD to, oh, I said that already. As it currently exists, and it may be amended to make it more impervious to legal challenge, the no camping ordinance. Hopefully, the county has the resources to also find other rehabilitation and relocation facilities for the homeless who are posing a risk to Malibu, so they are off the streets and are fire-prone brush areas. It would be dangerous for residents to take it into their own hands to take care of, which is where Big Rock is approaching. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any other public speakers?
Bill Sampson and Jefferson Wagner both signed up to speak on this item, but I can't find them in the meeting, so that concludes public comments.
Thank you. Bruce, would you, I see you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Paul. All right. Could say a lot, but I'll, 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 I'll be as brief as I can. It'll be a little longer than you might want, but it'll be a lot sugar than I would like. Um, first of all, I wanna, I, I wanna compliment Mikey Pearson, John Cotty, Steve McClary, and Susan Duennas for the hard work that they've put into getting us where we are. Um, also Captain Chuck Becerra and Lieutenant Jim Braden, and to some extent Sheriff Villanueva. Um, there are many members of the public, including some who are now members of the homeless task force, who have helped get us where we are. Um, also, special thanks to Steve Euring. As everyone knows, Steve and I had proposed an amendment to the existing camping ordinance back in December. We pressed to have it adopted in January. We didn't succeed. That happens. Um, but the city council did agree that I should work with the city attorney to see if we'd come up with something that we could, we could all support. So John and I met back in March or April. Um, and the proposed new camping ordinance is the outgrowth of those discussions. Took a while to get there, but it's, it, it's, it's a different product. Uh, and we've had it previewed tonight. We'll talk a little more about it later. Um, a couple weeks ago, I, I expressed a desire to have this put on the agenda, and uh Mikey said, and I said that I, it would be great to have some support from another council member. Mikey stepped to the plate and expressed an interest in working with me on this subject, and we conferred with John Cotty to confirm that the new ordinance was sufficiently different from the prior one that it would be okay for us to work together after having worked with Steve nine months ago. And um John said it was okay, so we did. Um, what we have here today, I think, is amazing because I've only seen support from the residents, including some residents who you might expect to see opposed to some of these things. Uh, this is, as far as anyone has expressed a view, it's been unanimous support, not a single expression of dissent from the public. I reached out to Captain Becerra and Lieutenant Braden this morning um to confirm that there were, that there weren't issues with some of the details. The response I got from Captain Becerra is, quote, "The resolutions appear to be enforceable on our end. I do not have any concerns." Now, I'm by no means holding the sheriff's department to that. That's obviously a um, high-level reaction after having read this. It's, it hasn't been through the city, the county council yet. I'm gonna talk about that in a few moments, but that's the initial reaction from law enforcement. Um, I, I'll make one comment. In, in Susan's presentation, she did at one point uh refer to some of the folks as people experiencing homelessness. Actually, she referred to all of the folks as people experiencing homelessness. There are clearly some people, maybe even a lot of people, that are living unhoused in Malibu who are experiencing homelessness, but not all of them are. There are, there are, there are people who truly are camping, who just, who are on the road, don't want to be living in a house. Not that they can't live in a house. They don't want to be living in a house, and I don't think of that as a person who's experiencing homelessness. Anyway, this is not all we can do, but it's much more than we've been doing. I continue to believe that Martin versus Boise was wrongly decided and has no application in Malibu in any event based on materially different facts on the ground here. Um, there are very few, if any, people living unhoused in Malibu who are from Malibu, who lost their home in Malibu and who now find themselves on the street. There are some, very few. Um, we are, as has been stated by many people, a very high fire hazard severity zone every square inch. Those factors were not present in Boise, Idaho, and no court has said that with those factors, the ruling in that decision stands. But that being said, we're going to do our best to comply with the holding of that case as if it did apply here. I'm highly confident the proposals on the table fall squarely within the contours of what is permitted by Martin on the assumption that it applies here. I've repeatedly argued for more stringent restrictions and consequences, but I've been repeatedly rebuffed by the refrain that someone will sue and argue blah, blah, blah. And as I said earlier tonight, anyone can argue anything. It's one of the great things about this country. Anybody can file a lawsuit. Anybody can argue anything. What matters is not whether they'll sue or make an argument. What matters is whether they're right. And I believe we have the right, we have what, done what's right here. The reality is, we need three votes to do anything, so there's been compromise to get to where we are, and this is the result of that compromise. Uh, there is the problem of the county council who have provided what I believe to be politically tainted and inaccurate directions to the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. The DA, as we all know, is refusing to enforce valid laws. Absent from going to court to obtain clarity, which I have actually advocated in the past and discussed with some residents, there's not much we can do to change the approach of the county council and the DA. So we have to craft something that conforms with what they're saying, whether they're right or they're wrong. And that's what we've attempted to do here. We've attempted to craft something that meets the Boise decision. Um, the proposed resolution is, is crafted to largely replicate what the Board of Supervisors recently did through their motion. And they are confident that what they're doing is, is proper and legal. Um, it's also supported by multiple decisions of federal courts post-Martin that hold that that decision does not prohibit clearing encampments or even individuals. It only prohibits criminalizing the act of homelessness by arresting and, and imprisoning a person who has no access to shelter. In April of two thousand nineteen, the United States District Court for the Northern District of California held the city of Oakland didn't run afoul of Martin by, quote, "cleaning and clearing," close quote, a park where an encampment was located. The court noted that cleaning and clearing a park didn't require an arrest. And while, this is a quote, "While Martin limits locality's ability to arrest their homeless residents for the act of living in the streets when there is nowhere else for them to go, it does not create a right for homeless residents to occupy indefinitely any public space who they're choosing." That was the Levann Hung versus Schaaf decision. And significantly, the court reached that decision in reliance upon two prior decisions of California district courts that, post-Martin, that reached the same result. More recently, in February of last year, the United States District Court for the Central District of California, that's where we are, rejected a plaintiff's argument that he'd stated an Eighth Amendment claim under Martin based on an allegation that the city of Los Angeles had been depriving him of his right to sleep on public streets for the past three years by taking down encampments and forcing him to move. The court explained that under Martin, the Eighth Amendment only bars the city from criminally prosecuting the plaintiff for sleeping on public streets if he has no other place to go, and that, quote, "Courts following Martin have declined to expand its holding beyond the criminalization of the homeless." That's Young versus City of Los Angeles, right in our neighborhood. So the prepare, so the, the resolution doesn't criminalize anything. It deals with encampments. It follows the Board of Supervisors' resolution. It has unanimous support from everyone who has spoken about it from the public, and I urge our council to unanimously approve that tonight. The camping ordinance is carefully crafted also to comply with the dictates of the Martin decision in the event it does apply to the facts on the ground in Malibu. Now, the camping ordinance does result in criminalization for violation of its terms, but it expressly carves out from the prohibition a person who lacks access to adequate temporary shelter who is doing no more than sitting, lying, or sleeping in public, which is exactly what Martin says you cannot do. We, we are not gonna do that. Now, um, when Susan explained it, she explained it a little bit in reverse, and it's, it's complex, so I, I, I don't falter for that. But I just wanna make it clear. Um, the prohibition is relaxed if a person is truly homeless and is, and is lying, sitting, or sleeping in public. But there are things that no matter who you are, you are still bound by. And those were the things Susan explained before the prohibition. So the prohibition, first, it's a blanket prohibition against camping. Then it exempts people who under Martin arguably need to be exempted. But then, notwithstanding the exemption, it comes back with some further qualifications, which Martin says explicitly you can do. That's where you come into the distances from residences, businesses, and the school. That's where you get into using fire. That's where you get into defecation, garbage, those kinds of things. Nobody gets to do that. Doesn't matter who you are. You don't get to do those things. So, given the amount of compromise that already has gone into these delicately crafted proposals, I'm hoping, again, that the resolution will be adopted tonight as it is. I'm hoping the staff will not tinker much, if at all, with the proposed ordinance before it comes back for approval, hopefully in two weeks. Because again, it's the result of a very careful compromise, and the moment you make one change, you make someone in that compromise no longer supportive necessarily. So I'm hoping that we're going to be very careful in playing with this, if we play with it at all. We've wasted too much time in being stymied by the specter of an imaginary boogeyman that doesn't exist in the real world, and I hope we're gonna move forward. And hopefully Captain Becerra is right, and that this is enforceable, and we'll see enforcement, and we'll see dramatic improvement. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen?
Um, thank you. I, I just have some questions. Um, so number one, um, if, if an encampment is cleared or individuals are removed um from uh, from any area, do we have any suggestions of where they would go? So that, that's one question.
I believe the, the uh thought here was that we would be uh offering housing vouchers or for, for those cases, but I'm sure Susan has a better answer than that.
Okay, so that, can, can, can I just expand on that question? Okay, thanks. So, so if the um, if the mechanism that makes this enforceable is vouchers, and, and we've been told that's enforceable, that's great. Um, and so I guess my next question is, for whoever can answer, um, do we have money budgeted for vouchers, and if so, how much? Um, and I'll just note uh that the Los Virginist Malibu COG um, uh executive board directed, or governing board, uh, we passed a motion a month or two ago uh to set aside twenty thousand dollars for vouchers. Um, I'm not sure how far that will go, uh but at least we do have those uh for the use um uh during red flag warning days. So number one, uh if it's vouchers, great, Susan, if you don't mind keeping track of this. And then number two, um is there money in the budget for vouchers, and if so, how much? And then this is a question, just, you know, dealing with logistics, and I'm not sure how, how much we need to to answer these things or be concerned. But the, but what was brought up during um the COG homeless working group meeting that I was able to attend because one of the other members was not there uh a few weeks ago. Regarding the motel vouchers, what we were told by a representative from LA Family Housing, which I believe is a nonprofit, um, there was a rep there in that meeting. She said there were very few um motel rooms available, even if there was money uh to pay for vouchers. So I'm not sure how, how far down the line we need to look at the execution of the plan. I, I'd like to find a way for it to work, but I think you know, that's something that we probably need to have on our radar. Um, and so, let's see. Um, oh, and then I just am wondering uh, the exclusions, you know, I fully understand, not near schools and not near a lot of things that were listed. What does that leave? And Susan, I'm thinking that, that question is for you, or if Mikey or Bruce has um, thought that through. So the, those are my questions. Thank you.
Give Susan first crack at it.
Thank you. All right. So uh Karen, you are correct in, in, with regard to the vouchers. Honestly, the, the, the money is not the problem. The, for motel vouchers, it's the number of rooms you can actually access, and would they even be available? Because they're not gonna reserve a motel room for you. They don't, it doesn't work that way. And there are some motels that do work with, excuse me, cities and agencies to uh house homeless individuals, and our homeless outreach team regularly uses them, but usually for the clients that are in the process of becoming permanently housed. So they use it as a temporary stopgap, um and these are usually individuals who are pretty stable, a little more trustworthy. Um, but many motel owners, as you can imagine, are not really keen on just letting any old person you know, in their motel. It's risky business. Um, and another big issue that they have is most of these places require that you have a ID of some sort. There are a lot of individuals living on our hillsides that do not have an ID. So it makes it very difficult to get them into a motel room. Um, and you are correct, uh the individual that we talked to um from LA Family Housing, and even um Rachel Simon, the homeless deputy for Sheil Appeals Office, has confirmed that the number of motel rooms that we would even have access to is only about five or six, so it's not very many. And there's no guarantee they'd be available, but it is.
Susan, can I ask a, a clarifying question? Uh, fi- five or six um available to the city of Malibu?
In general, just available in general, not just for Malibu. So imagine, this is like places in the valley.
What does that mean, though? Like for the whole COG, for?
Yeah, it's kind of the valley.
In LA County?
West Side.
Five or six total?
For what they were saying we'd have access to for Spa Two, so that would be the valley.
Right, okay, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So it's not gonna be a whole lot different in Spa Five, which is the west side, which we're part of. I've heard the same, you know, anecdotally from our, our team, and usually they prioritize those folks that are on their way to permanent housing to use those units. I mean, they're much more concerned with those folks who are ready to get housed and providing them the motel rooms, which makes sense. So it doesn't mean we completely count that out. There are small possibilities of doing some motel vouchers, but it's not gonna take care of the whole problem. Other strategies they have is if they can, um, working with the individuals to see if they have friends or family that they can go stay with. Uh, and that does work out sometime, and there are funds available to help them. Um, you know, for transportation to get back to, whether it's, you know, family or to go to a friend's house. Um, so that does happen. Um, occasionally, there'll be a room in a shelter, because we do have access to, you know, shelter accommodations to the people concerned. Um, but there's not always openings, and people aren't always agreeable to go to a, to a shelter, which is a different issue altogether. So essentially, excuse me, we're providing people with information on what possibilities that they have. And encouraging them to take advantage of these possibilities. And then I guess it would get to the point where their reviews refusing any of this, that you could then enforce the ordinance. And, um, ask them to move on their way and they'd have to just keep moving until they're out of the very high fire hazard severity zone. Um, because everywhere they go, it'll be the same situation. So that's with the vouchers. Also, I just, um. The other possibility is not coming right away, but it will be coming in the future is a lot more money for project room key again. Our home key, so to speak. So there's a lot of money being poured into purchasing more hotels, motels for housing for homeless individuals and we will be able to access that eventually, but it does not in the near future. It's a little further down the line. And then your question about where can they be? Yeah, that's a tough one. And, uh, I was asked to kind of look at the city, look at, you know, based on where the, uh, extreme fire hazard areas, meaning right up against the brush areas. Where the fire hazard is even more, um, intense. And then taking into account the other restrictions of, you know, 1,500 feet away from schools, 200 feet from a residence, 25 feet from a business. And it honestly doesn't leave a lot of locations. And the only locations I could find, and this is not a thorough search by any means. Are just a few places that are city or county property. You know, civic center area. Like if somebody's sleeping on a, a bench at the, on Civic Center Way at Legacy Park, that would be a place where it would be difficult to enforce this if they're just sleeping on the bench. So those kinds of places. So I didn't find a lot. It's very small. I mean, our city properties and some county properties, um, would fall under this. This rule in terms of places where you could possibly sleep.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm just trying to sort of project into the future. Uh, if this were enacted. How, how, what might trip us up? And, and try to anticipate issues. So, you know, so that this, this is feasible. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor Rissanti, if I could just jump in.
Sure, John.
I didn't raise my hand, but thank you for acknowledging me.
I'll spank it later.
Um, you know, this, this, this ordinance, um, was carefully crafted and I think that, um. I think this way is, is kind of conflating the two ideas that are before you tonight. One deals with encampments. And one deals with putting aside encampments, the regulation of camping. And, and, uh, Councilor, Mayor Portem Silverstein did a good job of explaining it, but it, it, it does regulate camping in a very specific way. It identifies very specific, we'll call them no camping zones. And they're listed in, in, uh, there, those distance restrictions are tied to state laws. And are tied to other areas of your code where there are distance restrictions. In those areas, you can't camp. But in every other place in the city where there's essentially public access, you can camp. And, you know, one of your homework assignments is to direct us to do some further analysis of those areas. The intent with this camping ordinance is not, it is 100% absolutely not to, to ban camping. In its entirety, it, we can't legally do that. We've had that discussion before. Council, uh, Mayor Portem Silverstein and I've had that, we've, we've discussed that at, at length. This ordinance is designed to, if someone is lying, sleeping, or sitting in the confines of Martin. To allow them to do it unless they're in a very specific area of the city. And we're asking for direction from you to look at those areas to make sure they're compliant with Martin and to make sure that they, um. Don't run afoul of that, that case. Um, it may be that we get sued, um, that, that happens and um, we'll, we'll deal with that when it comes, but we've been very specific to identify, um. Narrow areas that are very impactful to the city and its residents from both a fire safety standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, and from other standpoints. Uh, to protect the city, its residents and the homeless or the unhoused population. This is designed to help them as well. So. I just wanted to make that point so that you knew that we, we wanted direction from you to look at those areas and make sure we are compliant. Uh, we've been working on this for a long time. Um, those efforts heated up over the past couple of weeks. So it's important that city staff at your direction does its homework to make sure we bring something back to you that complies with the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor Rissanti, if I could interject for just one moment, uh, one of the speakers you missed earlier was having some technical difficulties. He has joined the meeting now. If you would like to hear his comments.
Certainly.
Okay.
Who is it?
From Jefferson Wagner.
Oh. Jefferson, are you in the room?
Jefferson, you should have a pop up asking you to unmute on the screen.
I haven't, I've hit unmute.
You're on.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. And the, uh, the extra moment you're going to give me. Thank you, council members, for your obvious interest in this and the data that you've produced. With the city attorney, it looks really thorough and I read through it. And I really appreciate your efforts and the time that Mikey and Bruce put into this. Additionally, I did not get to see Craig Hill's comments, however. Uh, one thing I did mention in my letter I drafted and sent to council members about 90 days ago were the use of generators. Which, uh, has proliferated. And in fact, in the last 30 or 40 days, we had a generator fire started in our hillsides in the city of Malibu. That might be one of the things you would add. Uh, additionally, uh, Ricardo Lara might be interested in seeing how this goes forward. Uh, the insurance commissioner for the state of California, because he's very instrumental in the California Fair Plan, uh, modifications that they've come up with because of the fires in the past. Once again, thank you very much for your deliberations and the interest on the behalf of your community. I think you're on a positive stroke here. And I think that you'll have good grounds if it comes to that. In the Anderson part of the decision, which I also mentioned in my letter. Which does limit the amount of material that somebody living, you know, homlessly or without a home can carry around with them. So thank you very much. Once again, council members, I only took a minute and a half. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity. Uh, Bruce, I'm going to recognize you and I'm hoping you're going to make a motion.
Well, I wanted to provide some more meat to the answers to the questions that Karen had asked because I think it was acknowledged that we might have some more details. Um, but I can make the motion first. I mean, the mo- motion is to approve the resolution and to, um. Direct staff to do the things identified in the staff report with respect to the camping ordinance that we might approve that two weeks from now.
Second that.
Thank you, Mike.
Motion's made and seconded. Now we're discussing.
Right. So to, to put some more meat on the, the answer to those questions, um, as John pointed out, it's, it's, it's important to view both of these items separately. Even though they work in tandem, they are separate. In fact, it's really helpful that we're only considering the resolution tonight. And we actually will consider the adoption, hopefully of the camping ordinance next week. So focus first just on the resolution and the question. So the question, first of all, how does it get enforced? Do we have to have vouchers? If so, where do they come from? The resolution does not requi- legally does not require vouchers. The resolution is an encampment. It deals with encampments. It doesn't criminalize anything. It follows almost, it almost verbatim, other than making changes that are necessary because we're not the county, the county motion. So the voucher issue really isn't a legal issue with respect to the encampments and the resolution. Notwithstanding that, it would be great to have a place to send people, obviously, as they are informed that this is a very high fire hazard severity zone and that we have this resolution. And that's all built into the proposals as to what we'll hopefully be able to come up with. But let's say vouchers are an example. This, this starts, unfortunately, this starts to weed into the other, the, the camping ordinance too. So I'm going to unfortunately have to violate what I just said and say a little bit about it, just a little, which is you, you heard from Scott that there are some statistics that suggest that upwards of 90% of people living unhoused don't want help. I think that may be exaggerated, but we, but it, it, it's a high number. Um, if, if it were 90%, what that means is for every voucher you have, you're only going to be able to find one of every 10 people that will accept it. If you've got five vouchers, that, that actually using that statistic covers 50 people, maybe it covers 40. Under Martin versus Boise, anyone who turns down a voucher doesn't have a right to stay where they're, where they are. They actually can be arrested and I'm not advocating they be arrested for that. But they can certainly be told in no uncertain terms that they now have a choice of moving on or being arrested. And I, I think Jim Braden will confirm that. I mean, if they document with their camera, their chest camera, that someone refuses shelter, that's a, that's offered to them. They don't have the right to, to do anything at that point in Malibu or any other jurisdiction. But there's much more, there's obviously much more that needs to be done. And I, and I applaud Kay Gabbert for her, um, eloquent and compassionate statement, actually about there needs to be face-to-face assistance. And this doesn't rule any of that out. And that's obviously going to have to be fleshed out and supported. The question of where does the money come from? First of all, we, you know, we're paying the people's concern $350,000. And it was my understanding from the presentation when we approved that contract that they have vouchers. And they have access to certain shelters. And, you know, I, I get that they want to focus on people who can be helped the most. But if the people that could be helped the most aren't the people that are in Malibu. And they're not helping the people in Malibu because they're, they could be helped a little less, but we're paying for it. That's, that's nonsense. They've got to give us an allocable share. Of what they are, they have accessible to them because we're paying them to do that. And if they don't do that. Then that contract is terminable at will and we take the money we were paying the people concern. And we use it for vouchers and other places that people will accept from, from Malibu. Um, second, the state is, the state's flush with money to help house people. So there are going to be grant opportunities. We've already been told, hopefully that MR, that MRCA is putting in an application for grant money for us. For that purpose, among others. And, and bottom line is necessity is the mother of invention. We have to do something. So, you know, this is one of the things where if we have to spend some money in a place that's not budgeted, we're just going to have to find the money because this is critical, this is mission critical. But go back, resolution deals only with the immediate fire danger. The, the resolution deals only with encampments. The resolution follows the Board of Supervisors motion. The camping ordinance is a, is a different issue and I think we've said enough about that tonight. Cause we're going to be, we're going to have a, a more exhaustive hearing on that one, hopefully in two weeks. I think, I think that answers the, I think that answers the questions. If I didn't answer them, um, I'm, I'm happy to have further questions, but. So the motion on the table is approve the resolution and direct staff to come back to us in two weeks with the answers to the questions about the camping ordinance. And hopefully with a recommendation to approve it.
Okay. And Bruce, uh, thank you. Mikey has his hand raised and then Susan Duenis.
Uh, Susan, do you want to go first? Is there something you want to fill in?
Um, I just wanted to also, um, remind everyone, one of the, the nuances of a, a local declaration. And this is something probably more than a month ago, I'd gone to Steve McClary as we were having these encampment fires. And I thought maybe we should do a local emergency declaration or to get some leverage with the county to get them to do something. Fortunately, the county passed the motion, uh, a week ago, but I think we, we need even more. Cause when you have a local emergency, basically you're, you're stating that there's a condition of extreme peril that is beyond the resources of your local jurisdiction. So in this case, we would need the assistance of the county by perhaps opening winter shelters and offering that. Um, and also encouraging them to, um, do this also for the homeless individuals who are outside of our city. Cause I honestly am more concerned with the individuals sleeping in DePenga and the areas above our city where the fire can gain a lot of steam and then just mow us down. So I just want to remind people that's the, another major purpose of having a local emergency is that it does give us a little leverage in asking for resources from the county.
Thank you, Susan. Mikey?
Uh, thank you, mayor. And, um. I will try not to speak as long as Bruce. I don't actually know that I can. He's really good at it. Um, that's not a jab at your phone. Um, I want to, I want to thank Bruce for taking my phone call. It was the morning after our last meeting where I'd said I was going to bring something forward. And I knew he was going to bring something forward and would have been, you know, further dysfunctional to bring two things forward and banter them back and forth. So. We discussed if we could join together. And find that common ground, we felt that we really truly had the best interest of the entire city. Somewhere in the big spectrum of dealing with this really difficult issue. So I really appreciate the hard work that Bruce has put into this and he has put a lot of work into this. He is the penultimate, uh, wordsmith. Um, absolutely. Um. But I do have some comments on it. Just to make sure people understand, we are not going to cure or solve homelessness in Malibu. Cause this, this isn't going to do it. Camping ordinance isn't going to do it. But we are going to try and take proactive steps because this is an emergency situation. Seventeen fires so far this year started by people living outside. Seventeen. We've been lucky so far and luck is a horrible strategy. So. The hard question comes, and it's been mentioned, Karen brought it up, it's been discussed, where do these people go? And the potential downside of this ordinance, just to be transparent, is they go places that they haven't been visible before. And I know a lot of people are very sensitive in the community to people experiencing homeless but have mental and drug issues and, um, myself included. Talking with our outreach team. They say the people that are living further and further up into the brush are absolutely don't want to. They don't want to be down at Ralph's. So they don't want to be down. They come down once a day or once a week to get supplies. It's the exact quote from what I heard. So where do they end up? And I think that's a really big question that we do need to answer further. Um. And another goal with what we're doing here is we can't compel L A S D to do what we want. But we believe we come an ordinance that they will support. And that's important because there's no point in doing this and having our sheriffs unable to support us. That may, that makes no sense. Uh, and the sheriff has challenged us to take measures the last couple of years since I was elected, so they can take action. And so far to date, we've been unable to do that. Now we are not doing, this is not part of, this is the emergency ordinance and we'll get to the camping ordinance later. But we're not doing some of the things sheriffian Aleva asked us to do. We're not, this is not, there's no shelters, there's no safe parking, there's nothing like that. So I think we do, we do have some tough work to do. And I know Susan's been working on it. But where do some people end up? And I do, I care greatly. That we don't get sued and don't lose. Because I've been involved with the homeless enough to see the millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars cities have paid out. And make no mistake, the beach cities are targeted right now for lawsuits. So when John says, our attorney, John Cotty, says this has been carefully constructed, it has been painstakingly carefully instructed to follow the law. And it's been a lot of conversation to find that ground and a lot of, lot, lot of conversation to get there. With, uh, the mayor's permission, I, I would like if, uh, we could ask Lieutenant Braden to come on and give us his impressions on what he's heard. Any concerns, opportunities, and just, you know, James does a good job of expressing his feelings. So I, I would appreciate it if we could let him do that.
Thank you for staying up with us, Lieutenant Braden.
Well, I was watching the UFC fights with my son, but the, um.
Well, I was watching the UFC fights with my son, but the uh, I've been monitoring everything everybody said. The, hang on one minute, let me get in the area where there's not sound. Okay. The uh, no, I'm in total agreement with Bruce. These are two different things, okay? The resolution is an emergency. There there there's compromises in emergency. It there's no requirement saying, oh, we have to meet all these things before we can make these people leave the brush. The emergency is, like Susan explained, with the drought, with the low moisture content in the brush, with the San Ana winds coming. And I was in the field on the day of the Woolsey Fire. And uh, so witness, not just in your city, but in also uh, Calabasas, the county area, Seminole Springs, people trapped in the tunnels, the all day long. It was shocking to me more people weren't killed even. We did lose three lives that day. And we lost several hundred houses. So the emergent part of this, it's not some shamalam to say, oh, it's trying to get rid of the homeless people. Uh, look at the fires up north. It's a real thing. So, no, we're gonna, like I said, it's going to be challenging, but we're up to the challenge and we're going to work at this. And we're going to try to work with the resources we have. This is not going to solve the homeless issue right here. And just like the camping ordinance that Bruce is saying, there's nothing wrong with the city imposing restrictions on where people can be. There's nothing wrong with imposing restrictions on how much stuff they can have. I would take it a step further because you keep talking about uh, uh, people cooking and people uh, keeping warm. But a lot of these people smoke cigarettes, and it's like, this is the downfall. That was the theme behind CVS. But to think if someone's smoking, smoking multiple cigarettes a day, that that the every time they dispose of this butt that is properly done, well, that'd be nice if it was, but just like we have a ban of smoking on the beach, maybe that's for a different reason for just environmental and also people don't like to smell it. But at the same time, I would banish that because this is an actual real emergency. And no, it doesn't, we don't check all the little boxes on where everybody's going to go, but the entirety of Malibu is a fire zone. So it's not like you would have something within the fire zone where to put the people either. We're going to try to do the best we can with what we have available to help people. But there is other people that they don't want the housing. So and just like Bruce said, it's very true. If someone's refusing that, that doesn't fall in the parameters of that we have to do anything for this individual other than, no, you're not sleeping up in the bushes of Malibu. Period. It's not, that's what we're going to work at mitigating. We're not going to solve, like Mikey said, we're not going to solve every homeless issue right now. But it the it's, it's, you have to put these things into place. And just like I'm in total agreement with all the other camping stuff, it's a work in progress. There's no perfectness to it. It's just like what Susan said, oh, there's six rooms for the whole valley. There's a problem here because there's millions of billions of dollars being spent on this, yet we don't have their access to these resources to get these people, and some of them just don't want them. And Mikey made a comment earlier in the meeting where I when I, he he said that we're dealing with people with mental illness and different things. Yes, we are. And that will not be solved with a shelter. The uh, nor jail. So it's a, it's a societal issue, but this is a work in progress. It's not something to resist. It's something to embrace, and we try to get it into play. The in it's not, it's, is it going to be perfect? No. But i- is it, is it required? And we need to take action because this is an emergent issue. So that's what I would have to say, and I'm open to any questions on it also. But I think, but I'll I'll comment one other thing. I think it's very nice that Bruce and Mikey worked together along with the city attorney, the city manager, Susan, all these people. And I have discussions with Bruce, and I think it was very productive that people came together and tried to put something on paper that is a starting point for us. So I think that's important to support, so.
I really appreciate you you staying on and your comments, and thank you very much, Jim.
Yeah, and and the fact the city, you guys voted in extra deputies earlier in the year and all this. All these pieces can fall into place where it's beneficial to the residents, the tourists of the city, and people just visiting the city for the day that that they're safe, so.
Thank you. I I I want to end here with just uh, one quick last thought is that getting people out of the brush is obviously an emergency. It's, lives are on the line. We're going to have not that many areas potentially where the homeless can go. So the one thing I I want to, the additional thing that's been on my mind is I think it's important we figure out where there's facilities where they can go to the bathroom, uh, because that's been an issue already. And I don't know how we address that, but just leaving that out of the equation as we go forward. That, that's, I don't know that that's doable. So um, I'm not thinking of any permanent, but I'm I'm a little worried about that. It's been an issue in central Malibu, we know that. So that's my last thoughts, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mikey. I see we're going around again. Karen?
Um, okay, thank you, Paul. Well, look, and I'm not trying to throw a wrench into this. I'm I'm trying to just picture it moving forward, um, and I appreciate the clarification, the comments. Um, I realize we're not going to get perfection on anything here, certainly not homelessness. Um, but yeah. I've evacuated for fire since I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight. I've I've packed my car and ended up not evacuating. I had to put everything back and you name it. Um, to date, I haven't had a house burned down. I take I I take that back. I've had fire on my property. It just didn't burn my house down in La Costa in nineteen ninety-three. So I fully appreciate this, um, and I appreciate the collaboration that's gone into it. So um, that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Bruce, I'm going to take Steve before you because Steve hasn't spoken yet.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And and I I appreciate any, everything everybody has said, and Bruce, I want to thank you for the document you you folks have put together because it it is very, very well done, so thanks. But I wanted to follow up on one of Susan's comments. Uh, I I've talked to some of the people who are working on the homeless task force. Uh, and Kelly Pressus is one of them, and she has been trying to get to the county regarding opening up these winter shelters uh, to try and see if we can't find some way to start taking care of some of those people. She also has been very active in talking to other cities, right, to see if there's some partnership available uh, that may give us some place to help these folks go to uh, when they're they're moved out of the the hill. So uh, you know, I I think there is a sense of compassion going on here. No, we're not roasting people. Uh, that where everybody is in, as I think as Braden said, this is going to be a work in progress. Some of the stuff we're not going to have, and we'll begin, hopefully, as we keep moving forward with this thing, we'll get smarter, uh, we'll come up with some better solutions. Uh, and you know, the the end result hopefully will be that we will be able to protect ourselves and our community because that's really the game we're playing right now. So Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve and Bruce.
Oh, you didn't want to make some comments first, or should I just go ahead?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment and then call a question, so you better go now.
All right, it's just three very, very quick points. Um, I forgot to say before, as far as what locations are left. And and again, as John said, and it might have been said by one other person, this is not that the camping ordinance, which we're not voting to approve, is not intended to prevent there from being any place where you can satisfy the ordinance. It's it's just, it's just not. But it's important to recognize that people that are living unhoused don't have the right to choose where they want to be. If, as long as we're providing place for them, that's good, that's it, that's all we're required to do. They don't have, we don't have to give them a place they want to be. We just have to make sure there's a place they can be. Um, solving homelessness, because there's been hinted at, people said this, you know, same thing I said earlier about global um, climate change. Homelessness has existed since the beginning of civilization. We're not going to change that anywhere without everybody working to change it. It's it's it is a global issue. It requires a paradigm shift. Um, lastly, Mikey, I hope you appreciate this. On on the issue of a restroom, that's one of the things that I'm really hopeful, we're not going to have to get into those weeds when it comes time to approving, we're not approving the camping ordinance. Because, you know, that's one of the things that there was a compromise on not putting that in. And it's not something we can't, it's it is something we can address as we move forward. As Jim Braden said, it's a work in progress. But I hope it doesn't interfere with the conversation about getting the camping ordinance, which is lawful, in place. It, to me, that's something to address a month later when we see how it's working. Because maybe it'll be necessary, maybe it won't be necessary, maybe something more will be necessary. But I don't want to get bogged down in those weeds and and pass up an opportunity to all collaboratively agree on something that works.
I I wasn't planning on making a motion on that. I just think it's something that's important we we figure out. And uh, since we don't know exactly the areas and all that yet, there's a lot to work out. I just want to add that to the mix for all for sanitation and humanity's sake.
Thank you, Mikey. Uh, I got to tell you, when I read this, I thought this is going to be a very short item. And we'll get five O with no problem. So I think that uh, as a salesman, I I when I think people are ready to sign on the dotted line, I let them. So I'm I'm going to call the question, but I also will say there are sanitation trailers that are available for rent if that should come to that. And I'm hoping at some point we can talk to Lisa and she'll tell us that things are better than she feared they would be. But I guess we have to wait a lot, a little longer before we get that. So I'm going to go ahead and call the question now. Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Urey? Councilmember Urey, you're muted?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that takes us to item five A. The Woolsey Fire Fee Waiver Program deadlines, which we continued from August the ninth. Is there, are there any public speakers?
We do have a public speaker. Did you want to hear the staff report first?
I'm sorry, yes, I do want to get the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I will tell you, Mayor Grisanti, it's not this item, but um, as the, as we are closing the year, I am seeing better numbers for year end. Um, so just to give you a preview, we won't have audited numbers or a year-end closing till probably early November. It will come to you, but right now, things are looking good. Um, I have a very brief staff report here just to kind of sort of bring you up to where we are. Back in June, when the council adopted the budget, um, the direction to staff was to bring back the fee waiver item in terms of considering if a change in the deadlines would be a fiscally prudent thing to do. There, as staff analyzes it, I mean, certainly, any fees you don't waive would be revenue coming in. But at this point in the fiscal year and in the cycle of where we are with the fee waivers, the existing deadlines are such that staff has been working with applicants with the these deadlines in place. I think it would be very difficult. Um, we do have um, staff available uh, who could speak specifically to that. I think Yolanda is here and um, Patricia Salazar uh, from the Planning Department, um, since Richard is is out, um, who could answer specific questions about those um, sort of two processes. But in terms of where we stand with the deadlines, just to refresh everyone's memories, um, the current fee waivers have to get to be eligible for a fee waiver. You have to have all your documents into planning by the end of this calendar year. And then to complete your building process, you actually have to pull permits by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So the end of the fiscal year. Um, and that is where we're standing today, and I think from the comfort level, and Yolanda can certainly speak better to this. Um, but in order to get the people who are already in process through their building permits, we really do need that time to get help those people cross the finish line. Again, this is up to council, and you can make your own decisions, and that's why we're here, so you can have a chance to discuss it um, as it's been agendized. So I think that's all I have to say, and I think the three of us are here to answer any questions later.
Thank you, Lisa. Do, I, I'm going to go ahead and ask for the public speakers if we have any.
Yes, we have one public speaker, Vince Muselli.
Hi, Vince. Are you unmuted?
Vince, you should have a pop-up asking you to unmute.
There it is.
I hear you, Vince.
Got me there? All right. I don't see my beautiful, beautiful face there, though. Okay, anyway.
It's our loss.
I sent the email to everybody today. I'm not sure if everybody saw it. Uh, so I won't necessarily, if you, is everybody on City Council seen the email I sent? Can you hear me or not?
Uh, we can hear you just fine.
Oh, okay. Anyway, sentence, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to ascertain that that everybody saw my email. If they did, then I won't repeat my email.
Several of us were nodding vigorously.
Okay, all right, sorry. Not looking at it very soon. So um, in regards to the fee waivers, um, which is obviously very important to people who have economic issues, all of us who still have a future to go here to try to rebuild, rebuild the house. Uh, fee waivers are important. But more importantly, the deadlines, um, deadlines that are imposed right now uh, by the end of the year and then the one by the end of June of next year to have your plans in and and everything, uh, are not realistic. The reason why they're not realistic is because of the settlements that are still ongoing with a lot of people, including myself with Southern California Edison Company. And a lot of folks do not know exactly what, how much they will have and whether or not they will be able for to rebuild or not. Um, I think there's a missing, you know, I could think that a lot of people have heard about settlements. But I believe that, and I don't have a number, I have no way of actually creating, finding a number either. There are a number of people that have not settled. And the law firm that I'm utilizing, uh, they have said that at least seventy-five percent of them have not settled. And probably will not be settled until next year sometime. So that's one point. Last point is, is that the, these, these deadlines to me are artificial as far as I'm concerned. Because whether I book, decide I'm going to rebuild my house next year or the following year or three years after that should be, you know, shouldn't be a penalty on me for not being able to rebuild what I had plus a ten percent. I believe there's other people that are in that same position as well. But uh, uh, and the last point I'm going to try to make is that, that some of us would have wanted to, and some people have had properties passed on to family members. A lot of may have been houses who did not burn in the Woolsey Fire. So people like me who may want, who may rebuild and want to rebuild want to be able to, if we can't rebuild, we want to be able to pass on the property to a family member so they can rebuild. But they not, they not be able to rebuild financially until a a longer period than when I would be able to. So I think that we.
That's your time.
Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Vince. Do we have any other speakers?
No, that concludes public comment for this item.
I'm going to go first on this one for a change. I feel for you, Vince, and I have, I've lost homes twice in Malibu. And I can tell you that I have direct experience dealing with the way the county does it. And the way the city does it, and the. I'm going to start by saying I'm unaware of any place in the state of California that has waived. Permit fees for fire rebuilds. And I will tell you that the County of Los Angeles, 30 years ago, had a policy of. You only were eligible for the protections of fire rebuild status for a total of two years since the day of the fire. We are currently closing in on three years, and we're talking about the expiration of the free. Permit, free processing, it will be over three and a half years after the fire. So. I'm not. All I'm saying is. We're doing more than anyone else has ever done, as far as I've been able to find out. But you have to realize that it's a strain on everyone, including you. So I've got, Mikey has the floor next, followed by Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. I originally brought forward the fee waiver idea. The city was in shock, overwhelmed. It was. No one knew, no one knew how we were going to go forward, exactly what it would look like. How many people would rebuild? How many would just give up and leave? How many would sell? Those are, it was a totally unknown world. Now we're getting further down the line. Lisa, how many people have 300 and what have? Put in?
So, and I don't know.
Verifications, or where are we at?
So, 304, as of the time we wrote this, and remember, it's a little dated, because we wrote it for August 9th, I don't know. If we have updated numbers, maybe Yolanda has that.
Three, 300, and what is it?
315 as of today. 315 approved by the Planning Department. The constitute 61% of the total rebuilds. As far as the permits that have been issued, is 205. That is 42% of the total. There is 110 under plan check review.
Okay, thank you, thank you for those numbers. So. Doing quick math in my head, so 65% so far are underway. You said 61, but my math was 65, whatever, we're close. Are starting the rebuild process. I always figured in my head it was going to be about 70% ish would. And the other 30%, would have different stories, you know, sold, or just left it, or whatever. Or built a mansion, whatever. So to me, right now, we're getting down to the, like, the seriously needy people. That I did this for, that I brought this forward. And I understand the time is long. I was caught off guard that the settlements were still going. Because a number of people are relied on, and a group of them had settled, and I thought that reflected everyone else. And now I've discovered from Vince and other people, that's actually not true, and I did not know that. And I understand, we're all, it's exhausting for everyone, city budgets. Planning, it's been a nightmare. It's been really tough. I'd like to suggest an idea, and I don't know the locality of, so that we can move forward, that. That if there was a way to come up with a mechanism for people caught still. That they could verify they hadn't settled, and that they planned on rebuilding. If there could be some sort of grandfathering there, then we could close this off and let the grandfather people either come forward when they. You know, within a certain time of settling or not. To me, that would take care of the people that we actually did this for. I think the people that have been through the process, they are actually the ones that, you know. Maybe a better chance at it all the way along. Now we're the people I originally was bringing this forward on. So those are my thoughts, and I know it's been long, and I understand everything you said, Paul. I know it's true. This is our home. These are the people I really wanted to take care of, and that's just my thoughts on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce is next, followed by Steve.
Okay, so I, I, I agree with much, if not all, of what Mikey just said. The purpose of the fee waiver program was to ensure that residents who lost their homes in the fire. And what had nothing more to replace that which was taken from them. Could do so free of cost imposed by the city for a permit to replace what was lost. Very simple proposition. Paul said nobody else has done this. I actually recall when this was presented to City Council in May of 2019 or April. There were, there were, there was evidence that it had been done in multiple other places, but I could be mistaken in that belief. It's easy enough to go check the staff report from back then. But the need exists today every bit as much as it existed for the past almost three years now. Indeed, the need for the remaining residents, as Mikey said, and I've been saying this for a while. Is even greater than it was for those who've already rebuilt, because the ones who still have not rebuilt. Are those who can least afford to. They're waiting out, as Mr. Muselli said, waiting out their lawsuits against the SCE, against SCE. And COVID-19 has stymied that process. It's also worked to SCE's benefit, because they're wearing down the planets, playing rope-a-dope and running out the clock. You know, they could just sit there forever. They don't care if it doesn't settle for a long time. They've got the money set aside. They know what they're going to pay. But if somebody is desperate, they'll take less money sooner than later. Now, and that brings me to a, to a second point of two points I'm going to make, I'm going to make. The problem today, the financial problem, is not the doing of anyone who lost their home. As I see it, it's the city's mismanagement of the program. And its agreement to accept a low-ball settlement from SCE in order to get a quick payment, which is what I just alluded to a few moments ago. The program should have been designed to preclude people from gaming the system. Steve's been bringing this up for the past year. By, they get a free permit. They have no intention of building the same or 10%, because as soon as they get their free permit after some short period of time. Goes by, they then ask for what they really intended to ask for from the beginning, which is a bigger home. Which they weren't, and the system, this was not put in place to let people get a bigger home for free, for free of charge on the permits. It was designed to get you free of charge what you lost. Not the home, obviously, but the permits. And the system's been gamed, and the city didn't do anything about that when it became obvious that was happening. And as I stated, the settlement with SCE was woefully inadequate. I recently reviewed the backup material of the settlement. Which I couldn't get previously. I'd been asking for it early on. I finally got it from Steve McClary, which I appreciate. I believe the City Council was misled by the lawyers and anyone else involved in recommending the settlement to the city. If there'd been a lawyer on City Council when the settlement was presented, I'm confident it would have been rejected. And it would have included all the money that the, that the waiver of the permits is being said to cost, which was woefully underestimated. And there are other factors that were underestimated too. So, so now the question is, because the city mismanaged the program. Because the city mismanaged the settlement, should the residents who this was designed to protect suffer? I say absolutely not. So for that reason, I oppose terminating this, and I support extending it as long as necessary. For every single person who's a resident of Malibu, full-time primary resident, who wants to rebuild their house. Once they get the monies, the funds to do it, I support that. And as Mr. Muselli pointed out, it's not just a question of waiving the fees. It's also a question of extending the deadlines for getting those easier permits. That so many people have taken advantage of, and then gotten even bigger house. We need to extend the deadlines. However, we need to do that, so that over the next year or two. As SCE finally starts paying the money it needs to pay to the people it harmed. They can afford to rebuild their houses. They get all the same benefits that everyone else got for the past three years, who actually were in a better position. To rebuild than the people who still aren't. So. I oppose letting this die. I support extending these dates for the waivers, and I support. Bringing back a item to extend whatever deadlines need to be extended, to let people continue to get a easy. Replacement, and they should stop being allowed to also immediately follow that up with a different house. That's just ridiculous.
Well, if you want to make a motion, I'm ready to entertain it.
Motion is to extend the waiver program indefinitely. For primary residences that are being rebuilt like-for-like. Cut off the loophole that allows people to thereafter get a larger home. And if they can do that, they can do that, but they don't get the. Free permit when they do that.
They've never gotten the free, the free permit for the, the extra square footage.
That's correct, but they got the free permit for the half of the application that let them have a free ride to the second one.
So if they want a bigger, how long a period of time is your proposal?
The proposal is extend the deadlines indefinitely. Cut off the loophole that allows you to retain the benefit of the waiver if you subsequently expand your house. And third, bring back an item to expand, to extend the deadlines. For people to get the ability to do a like-for-like without having to go through the full rigmarole. And I'm sure John can state that in better legal terms.
How long a period of time are you suggesting that they would be unable to enlarge their home?
A year.
Okay.
They, they're not unable to enlarge their home. They're just unable to enlarge it with a free original permit.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. I see Steve's hands raised.
I'm muted, yes. Okay, and I've listened to Bruce and I've listened to Mikey. I agree with Bruce in terms of, we've got to find some way to continue the ability of people to get some relief. From the city if we can. I agree with his proposal that says we shouldn't be waiving the fees. You know, we're waiving the fees on people that don't need the relief, right? They build their house, they do a like-for-like or a like plus 10. Then they have another 1,500 square feet. Those aren't the people that we really should be focused on trying to help. Now, the only thing I would suggest a little bit different, I would leave the deadlines in place, and I would treat it a little bit like. They do with the planning commission where you get your permit. And if your permit runs out, you can come in and tell us you've actually been working to try and get something done. And if your story is good and it's accurate, they can extend the amount of time, so you can get the fee waiver. What I'm concerned about, if there's no push to have these people move forward as quickly as possible, a lot of them won't do that. And I'm just trying to make sure, in addition to providing the relief that they need. We've got some component in place that encourages them to keep moving forward as fast as they can so they can get rebuilt. So I would just. The, you know, continue, do the cutoff or they are right now, the dates where they are right now. And then provide a vehicle for them to come back in after the fact, if they think they've got a good, you know, a reason to get the relief. And if they've got a good story, we can give it to them.
Interesting proposal. Karen?
Thank you. Actually, I was looking for something like what Steve just said. Because I, I am not comfortable with a quote-unquote indefinite. Extension. I mean, are we obligating a future council if something comes up in 20 years? I don't, I see Bruce shaking his head, but you know, I, I fear making anything on any voting body indefinite. Maybe, maybe I misheard you, but anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Karen. I see Lisa's hand is up. Perhaps she wants to give us some clarity on finances. Or something.
Well, I had a, I wanted to sort of point out a question, and I know, I don't know if Patricia knows the answer, or if Adrian is still on. I think I see him. I believe there were other deadlines regarding the ability to rebuild that we had to extend. Regardless of fee waivers, and I don't know then if we're running into an issue where. It's not just a fee waiver, but there are timelines set for. How, how long somebody can get a planning verification for rebuilding like-for-like before they have to start all over. I believe that was my understanding, but Adrian, maybe you or Patricia could answer.
Yeah, exactly. That's, 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 that's correct. So there is. There's a two-year for which an applicant is required to get the planning approval. And then a two-year for which they would have to then go through plan check and get their permits. There is a one-year extension for either the planning or the building safety for a total of five years.
If I could just add to that. I believe last year we extended it by a year, so we changed it to three years to get the planning approval. On the date of the fire, and then extended the deadline for building permits to 2023. And then six years for the extension.
Okay.
So we are, we are kind of overlapping here, right? And some of those deadlines are a bit confusing to folks. The deadline for your planning verification and the fee waiver deadline, but yeah, they're running into each other.
Okay, well, we're right up against a planning. Deadline right now, or, you know, in another couple of months. Bruce, I see you nodding your head and your hand is up.
Yeah. Couple of her comments, a response to Karen, and I don't understand that an indefinite time period binds any future council. Doesn't even bind us next week. We can, we can create a cutoff when there's no deadline. The absence of a deadline doesn't preclude the creation of a deadline. That's my understanding. John can tell me if I'm wrong about that. Second point is, as to what Steve was saying, maybe I'm confused, but I think we're conflating two things. People, right now, everyone has an absolute cutoff at some point coming up, where if they haven't filed an application. Filed whatever minimal piece of paper it is, they're not going to be eligible to do it the easy way. They're going to have to go back and do the entire CDP as if the house hadn't burned down, and they weren't given some benefit to get it back. As Mr. Muselli said, and there's many, many people like him out there. There are people that can't begin the process yet, because they don't know yet whether they have the funds to build, so they're not applying for permits yet. And I wouldn't expect them to apply for a permit, not knowing whether they can afford to build their house. That would be. Unless I'm misunderstanding that, Yolanda or somebody can explain that to me. There's a lot of people that just have not made an application and aren't in a position to make a naked application. Is that right?
So they, out of the 315, there is also 52 applications that are. Under the Planning Department that haven't obtained approval. We started reaching out to those 52 families. So if you count the 315 plus the 52, we're telling about with 367 families right now. That have come forward, that we know that they either are intended to, to rebuild. On the other side, I'm hearing that, yeah, there's still the negotiations with the. Insurance, and we're in, working through the settlement. But I do not have a count of how many families we are on that range.
Okay, so John, am I, am I right that if we don't, if we, if we set an indefinite extension at this point, that doesn't bind some future council from cutting it off?
No, it does not. The resolution could be rescinded or changed at any point in time by this council or another.
Okay.
Ordinances are a little different, but this is a resolution, so yes.
I had a third point, but I lost it. So those are my comments.
Okay. Would you like to address possibly. Working out some kind of compromise between Steve's position and Bruce's position? And see if we have something that we can get three or more people to vote for?
Mikey's good at doing that. Maybe he can offer something up.
By the great compromiser. Well, I'm going to turn to Steve, because I hear your issue. You've been very consistent on your issue. You have not wavered from your issue. So if, if, if it seems like a couple of us are interested in. People that really appear to need help still, and are just caught in this terrible situation. And the issue that you feel they're abusing the system. It seems like. It would be Bruce's motion with that you can't add more than the 10% for at least a year afterward. Isn't that what I'm hearing?
It was his motion, yes.
Oh, but he didn't have the part. I don't think Bruce had the part about you can't, or did you? Did you include that part?
Again, to be, to be clear, you can do anything you're legally entitled to do, but you don't get the benefit of the waiver. Permit, you'd retroactively lose the free permit if within that year you apply for the larger home.
I I'm willing to support that because we are trying to address the people that really are just trying to rebuild their house. So that, to me, would work. I don't know. What do you think, Steve?
I'm in the, I got no problem with that at all.
Okay, that's the motion, and it sounds like it is a second.
And if Karen's uncomfortable with an indefinite extension, even though it doesn't bind anybody, you know, let's put it out 18 months for now and see where we are.
Okay, uh, you know, we's.
Actually. Uh, I I no longer think that's necessary, but thank you.
We still have a problem with the limitation that Adrian brought up. Uh, what, what is? What is the three-year limitation based on for uh for getting some so- something to planning?
Oh, the uh, the planning limitation is um the. Uh, applicant's ability to maintain their non-conformities. So um, that's to submit their PV application and uh be able to preserve their non-conformities. Um, and again, we put in a timeline for that. Um, I'll, I also, you know, with the motion, I I like some clarification as to the one year. Uh, I would, I would imagine that would be from the issuance of a building permit, not from a plan approval. Is that correct?
Mikey's shaking his head. He knows that stuff better than I do.
Yeah, I I think that makes all the sense in the world.
Uh, the, the only concern is that permits sometimes can last for over a year, and so. They could essentially get their permit, wait a year. Then go through the planning process and plan check for the addition and may still be under construction doing uh. The, 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 uh, the two-step process that. Uh, we're talking about.
Well, I, so actually, let me amend the motion. Maybe it won't fly, but I actually, anyone who gets a free permit to do a like for like. And then later, before their final, they're done, approve, moves for, applies for a larger home. Ought to have to pay at that point, not only the permit fee for the larger, for the app, for the addition application. But the permit fee that they were waived, because again, the point was not to give anyone the ability to get a free ride on a much larger home than the one they lost. It's pretty simple to manage it.
Is, is it, uh, as I understood what you just said. Uh, the one year should be measured from the certificate of occupancy. Is that correct?
No, no, no. As long as, if they apply before they have a certificate of occupancy to enlarge the house, then they lose the um free waiver.
Okay.
I have a question. Sorry, Yolanda. Is this retroactive for those that have already?
We, we're stuck with what we did already. We can't change that.
Yolanda has her hand raised?
Yes, for clarification, uh, if we are extending the planning verification for 18 months. Um, how long are you extending the issuance of the building permit?
I don't think we can do that tonight. John can weigh in. I was recommending that staff come back with something that will allow us to do that because it's not on the agenda.
And the other item that I want you to consider, um, when a building permit is issued. You, the code talks about, uh. They can start construction after 365 days. So if I issue a permit for a like-for-like PV. The um, the applicants have the right to start their home but rebuilt. Until a year after I issue that permit. Um, so if you said they can come back after a year to submit the addition. This project possibly will be at the beginning of constructions. There's a lot of loop. That they might be able to use. I just want to give you that information so you can make a reasonable decision on what you need to do.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
This is.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Yolanda. That's why I I amended the proposal to be that if you get a fee waiver. And before your home is completed, before you get a certificate of occupancy, you then apply to enlarge the home. When you pay for that enlargement application, you also pay the the amount that you got waived. That way, no one can gain it at all. You either get what you lost with a free wa- with a free permit. Or you get something else and you pay everything you should have paid from day one.
I'm just trying to think out loud on how this is going to work and and we come back, we will come back to you uh with recommendations, but uh. There's a lot of variables and I just want to make sure that I am capturing exactly what you want us to do. And the interpretation that you want us to do on fee waivers as per your direction. Um, I think to me is when you say, when you apply for a certificate of occupancy. The certificate of occupancy. Um, when a home is being built and right now I'm just sharing information of the data that I have on the fire rebuilds. Staking about the families to rebuild about from 16 months to possibly 18 months. So. Um, if in that period of time. Do they have a a right to submit a planning application for the addition or? I guess I I need clarification.
Yolanda, I think that with the limitation Bruce has put on it, if if someone were to come into you and asked. To start processing something for an addition. You would explain to them that I I don't want to accept your planning application for the, for enlarging it because. Unless you are willing to pay back for the the free permits. We can do it, but you have to pay us back for the, for the free, free processing you got on the original house plus 10%. If you want to wait until after you have certificate of occupancy, you don't have to pay us that back.
Yeah, but Paul, maybe I misunderstand the construction business, but I I think that if you avoid the fee on that basis that you just described. If you, you're going to pay a lot more money to take your house apart and expand it than you would have if you just paid the fee in the first place.
And people will make that decision based on whatever the numbers work out.
Yes, they will, but it's not like every single instance they're going to go with that option because a lot of these houses are going to cost a lot more to change the plan once it's built than it would.
I'm not saying they wouldn't. I'm saying that they would make an informed choice at that point.
Absolutely.
And Lisa has been, had her hand raised for quite a while here, and then I'm going to go back to Yolanda. I'm sorry. Lisa?
Um, that's okay. I, so a couple of things because and I, and John can confirm for me. I think we, we will be bringing back to you a resolution. But tonight is absolutely when we need you to tell us what you want in that resolution. Including all the deadlines and the permutations, because that's what is agendized. You're, you're here to to give us direction. On what you want to do with deadlines. So, and that can be for everything. So we're here to talk about this. Fee waiver program. Um, and and we need that information so that we can craft the res- resolution that you want and bring it back. Um, I do just want to say that it was the prior council who gave us direction. To allow people to do these additions. This was not. They wanted to let people rebuild and then if somebody wanted to do a basement, as Councilmember Silverstein said. They specifically said, yes, if your house is unbuilt, it's way easier to do that basement that you didn't have before. Um, before you put the house back up. And and those things were specifically talked about. This new council can tell us to do whatever you now desire, and we will include that in the resolution. But the more specifics that you give us tonight about the deadlines. And those, those types of things that you want now to be clearly excluded. Um, the better we can craft this resolution and bring it back to you at the, you know, at a future meeting. Um, so I would just request that. So what I'm hearing, um. And and I, and maybe we'll circle back at the end. So I I get very clear. So what I have heard so far is that. Um. When somebody has applied for a fee waiver to rebuild their like-for-like plus 10%. They cannot come back for anything more without having to pay fees. Until they have that for a year after their certificate of occupancy is issued. They have the option of paying fees for everything. No?
No. If if they have a certificate of occupancy, they could show up the next day with an application. A planning application for an addition to that house or a whatever it is.
Okay.
Now, the big question is, uh, as I understood the time limits that Adrian mentioned. Uh, they have to get certificate of occupancy as it stands now within six years from the date of the fire. Is that correct? Adrian?
Um, Patricia, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's correct, right?
You're correct.
Pardon me? She said that's correct.
Oh, good.
File an extension if needed, and that extension is considered by the planning commission.
Okay.
It's, it's a one-year extension. Is that correct, Patricia?
So it's five years and a possibility of extending it to six after a trip to the planning commission?
Right.
Okay. Bruce, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, two, two issues. One is, I I just, I wouldn't state it in terms of you can't apply unless you pay. I would just, I would make the fee. For the subsequent application inclusive of the originally waived fee if somebody got a free. Permit and later before receiving a certificate of occupancy applies for an addition. That's one point. The other point is, I just want to make sure that, Lisa, I appreciate what you said about all deadlines are on the table, but I just want to make sure from John. That that's correct because the item was agendized as Woolsey Fire Fee Waiver Program deadlines. I understood that to mean permit prices, not, not dates by which one needs to apply to get the benefit of, not the waiver, but. The benefit of an easier application. And it maybe I just don't understand how that works, but I I thought we, that's a different item. I'm happy to give guidance on that or have us all give guidance, but I didn't think that we were allowed to do that tonight.
It's a different item, but you're, you're directing staff to bring that back.
Okay.
So everything is going to come back to, we just need a motion directing staff on what you want brought back. And I think you've made a motion and I think you've given yourself a friendly amendment with regard to certain fees or.
Can, and. And can I ask a a clarifying question because I would, we've done these separately as resolutions. And I would anticipate that we would do that as well. So we would bring you a resolution on the fee waiver piece. And then if there needs to be a resolution on the deadlines, which is a separate thing for the planning verifications and the easier path. That would come as a separate resolution.
And what, what I'm going to ask is, eh, there are other council people that understand the intricacies of the planning process much better than I do. So why don't they formulate the motion better than I did? And I'll be happy to second it.
I, I think Lisa could probably formulate it right now. I mean, I think we've said it enough times here. Um. Well, this is, this is where late council meetings catch up to you, start getting tired.
Yolanda has her hand up.
Yolanda, sorry, I didn't see that.
It's the last thing, um. How would you like us to handle the 52 applications that are occurring under planning? I think we need direction on that because those are really.
Fine, they're fine.
They're fine.
Yeah.
Retroactively improve and change the pricing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Going forward.
Yes, going forward. For sure.
If, if, if I may, I think the motion was to extend indefinitely the time period for Woolsey Fire rebuilds, which defined as like-for-like plus 10%. And if someone were to come in with some time period and request an addition beyond that. Square footage, it would waive any rights or have to pay back any. Fee waiver that they previously got.
That, that's how I understand it too. Steve, is that how you understood it?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's where we are, but you know, the only. Somebody mentioned an 18-month extension, which I just, again, I just like the process. It says there's a, there's a. A, a, a finish line out there that they're going to try and get to versus making it. Forever, but I don't have a problem with that. Let's do it because we're getting late. You're right.
I'm okay with the 18 months.
Okay, we'll make it for 18 months and we can revisit it.
Yeah, visit it then.
Okay. All right, that's a motion and.
The clarifying, that's 18 months extending the existing deadlines.
Right.
Right, exactly. From the existing deadline.
So instead of December of this year, it will be June of of uh.
Blah, 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 blah.
Twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Do we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mayor?
Kelsey, would you like to call the roll?
Sorry, who actually ended up making that motion?
I.
I think I did.
Compromises have many parents.
Yes.
It was a motion by Councilmember Pearson.
Excellent. Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes, and I'd like to mention that Bruce planted the seed from which that tree grew.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're going on to 5B. 5B, consideration of in-person meetings. This should be a short one. We have a staff report.
Let's just say no and move on.
Yeah, it's going to be no, right.
All right. Is there any public speakers?
No, you don't have any speakers for this item.
Wait, uh, the city manager might want to speak on this issue.
I'll be very brief.
Would you like to agendize a return of trip on this, Steve?
Uh, I think we'd like to come back at the next meeting on this. Uh, there's still some moving parts going forward here. Uh, we're, we're running into a bit of a catch-22 in terms of noticing for public hearings for uh the early. Meeting of the early planning commission meeting in October. Um, but yeah, if we, if we could come back, uh, just to keep this on for the agenda, I don't think we'll have too much to report. Uh, on the 13th, but uh, we probably will have some more information on the 27th. So if we could just keep this going forward. But yeah, right now, without the extension of the governor's order, um. Uh, we're, we're, and 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 facing having to go back to live meetings on October 1st. It means that if it doesn't get extended. Uh. We'll be, we'll be having to notice those, those first public hearing. For October uh a- as a live meeting, so.
Do we need a motion to bring this back on September the 13th?
No, moved.
I'll second.
Oh, uh, Kelsey, take the roll, please.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on, we're at item 6A, Boys and Girls Club of Malibu Event Fee Waiver. Do we have a staff report?
Uh, real quickly, good evening again, Mayor Grisanti, members of City Council. The item before you is a fee waiver request from the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu. To waive the facility use fees and staffing costs for the Chili Cookoff event. This year's event is scheduled to take place on Thursday, September 2nd through Monday, September 6th. At the Ioki Property in City Hall, otherwise known as the Chili Cookoff Lot. And it's one of the ways that Boys and Girls Club of Malibu supports their, their local after-school programs. Uh, such as the Teen Center and the Wellness Center of Malibu High School. So. Uh, the total fee waiver amount is $20,848, and that includes the facility use and staffing fees. So. Uh, that's all I have. Happy to answer any additional questions. And as, as we usually do, Casey is also here as well from the Boys and Girls Club to answer any specific questions that, that I might not be able to.
Thank you, Jesse. Do we have any public speakers?
No, you don't have any speakers on this item.
All right, but we can ask Casey questions if we want to. Karen, I see you're first.
Thank you. Um, I have a question um regarding the other fees. So reading from the staff report, all other fees associated with the event. Including permit fees and a facility deposit have been paid by the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu and are not.
And are not a part of this request. Additionally, Boys and Girls Club of Malibu would be responsible for paying parking occupancy tax. On the revenue generated from all parking fees. If approved, this event would be the second TUP issued for the Ioki property this year. Can anybody tell us? What that revenue was, you know, last year, there was no. Chili cook-off, so the year before that, can anybody tell us what that? Revenue was for the. Parking occupancy tax. And any other fees.
Lisa Solger has a finger raised.
So the parking occupancy tax I know. Was just shy of $4,800 in 2019. Of course, last year there was not. An event, so that did not apply. I'm not sure, and maybe Jesse knows, they they pay. They do cover the cost for any sheriff costs. Again, that's not. Revenue that comes to the city. It's basically a pass-through cost where. They cover those expenses. They they give us a deposit and then. True it up based on the actual expenses.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing those. No hands raised. Oh, Mikey, then Bruce.
I think Bruce was actually first.
Bruce, then Mikey.
Okay, so. The Boys and Girls Club gets money from Malibu from multiple sources, library funds, a grant. I think we approved money that goes to them from the half marathon and that's all fine. It's all well and good. And 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 I also am in support of this additional $20,000. That's fine. I'm concerned, this event has the potential to become a super-spreader event in Malibu. Especially with hundreds of children. So I'm wondering if we can condition the waiver. On certain COVID-19 protocols being in place. All employees wearing masks. Mask required of attendees who can't produce proof of vaccination. Temperature checks at the entrance. And now that the Pfizer vaccine's been fully approved by the FDA for all children, everybody over the age of 16. I wonder if we can arrange to have vaccines available at the gate. And free free admission for anyone that gets vaccinated and the city can eat the cost of the admissions. Just throwing those things out there for for thought. I mean, COVID-19's still with us.
I think you should, we should ask, we should ask Casey to speak because she does have plans in place that she could share with us.
Casey, are you in the room?
Hi there. Good evening. Thank you, members of City Council. I'm happy to go over the current COVID mitigation plans that are in place. We are obviously working. In accordance with all guidelines that are provided through LA County, so that's a requirement of all events. Any attendees from the public, so. We we were actually providing more than what's required in terms of measures, safety measures that are in place of. I'm happy to go through that now if you'd like.
Please.
Great. So just to detail and overview, we've taken it upon ourselves, again, it's not required. But for this year's event, we've hired. WMI, which is overseeing, they're called WMI Global Inc. and they're overseeing safety, medical and risk management. As well as COVID safety. They were just in place at the Tokyo Olympics and are experts in the field of safety mitigation in all areas. So they have been with us for the last month plus in planning and will be onsite at the event. All attendees will be encouraged to wear a mask, again, following LA County guidelines. All attendees who are not fully vaccinated will be required to wear a mask. We're screening attendees. In this fashion, we are not at this time requiring attendees to provide proof of vaccination. This is not something that's required. By LA County for events of this size. We are not a mega event. We are 10,000 and under. Meaning that we do not exceed 10,000. Attendees at any one given time. All food vendors who are serving or making food are required to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. We will have hand sanitizing stations throughout the venue. Masks will be provided to those in need who do not have them with them. Prominent signage will be at the entrance and throughout the venue in regards to COVID best practice, guidelines and social distancing. The bathrooms and high-touch surfaces will be sanitized throughout the day. Historically, again, as I said before, attendance has not remotely come close to a mega event, which triggers a whole nother set of parameters. And we are actually looking at putting. Maximum attendee numbers in place for ourselves as a way to further control. COVID spread. So happy to answer any questions that you might have beyond that.
Thank you, Casey. I see Bruce's hand is still raised.
Yeah, if I could follow up on that, that that's that's all great, actually. I'm really glad to hear those things because that's a lot more than I realized or thought you were going to do. The one, the one thing that you mentioned was that there will be a mask mandate. If someone's not immunized, which actually I think, I think goes beyond the county's requirement. I could be wrong about that. But you're also not going to require proof of immunization. So how does that work? It's just honor system?
It's honor system. Again, it's a little bit tricky, but it's. You know, trying to fall in line with what the county is recommending and then doing, you know, more diligence on our part. Through. You know, check the check-in process, right? That screening process when folks come in, when they're being screened and they're going through. You know, our security, our mags, they're they're not just being screened for for COVID protocols. They're being screened for safety protocols and other areas. And just, sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
No, that's okay. I didn't mean to drop. I thought you were finished. Keep, keep going.
Oh, just, you know, it it really is setting a tone. That we are. You know, setting a tone, what, you know, we we require masks. We want people to be masked if they're not vaccinated. But again, we can't mandate any of that. Because it's not a county mandate, so it does get a little tricky there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to get to is. You, as I understand it, you can mandate it because the county guidance includes that if the business mandates it. Then you're required to follow what the business has mandated. So any, anyone who is running any event is allowed to create whatever circumstances they want to create. And then they become the rules there. I I would encourage you to mandate proof of vaccination if if someone is not going to wear a mask. The other thing is just. What, is there a way to get a vaccination station set up and and maybe offer free admission as an encouragement?
I I think anything's possible. I would say if there was an opportunity to make that available and. It made sense, then absolutely I would 100% be for that. I mean.
I'm not going to insist, I'm not going to move to require that, but I would encourage you to do that both as an. Object lesson for the children and everyone who's going as well as to make it available.
I will look into that. Thank you, Mayor. Or sorry, Mayor Protem Silverstein.
Thank you, Casey. Bruce, are you done?
I'm done.
Casey, is the screening process does not include a temperature gun?
Currently, it does not, but it can.
I would encourage that. I would encourage that. It's. One more thing that could be helpful. And that's very inexpensive to institute. And if I I know we're talking about something that is less than two weeks away. So arranging a vaccination station may not happen. But if it does happen and. You end up giving vax entries away for people getting vaccinated, I think. Bruce suggested that we as a city would be willing to reimburse you for those. And I I'm gonna just say that I'm willing to do that as well. I don't know that we have to make a motion for it, but that's what I'm saying. I believe you're up.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, I like that suggestion. The last. Time we had vaccinations at the city. I know we had a few that were not very well attended. I believe it was Kaiser was running the. Yeah, Steve is nodding his head, yes. Can can, Casey, my suggestion or maybe my hope is that. You can partner with the city. Maybe be in contact with Kaiser. And see if they would come out again and set up that. Whatever you call it, mobile vaccination station. You know, I'm I'm hoping that's a possibility. I realize it's a holiday weekend, but I'm I'm hoping that's a possibility and. It sounds like you're willing to look into it, so I thank you in advance.
Steve, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I would be remiss if I didn't pass this along. I know it's been a very busy day and. Like I just received this. Within the last 24 hours and it is a notice from LA County Health. And that they are going to be imposing some additional restrictions on. For indoor mega events. But they they're not changing, I'm seeing any of the requirements for. Outdoor mega events. So there are some changes coming down from the county. But those are specifically targeting the indoor events. And just so you know, so starting September 20th for indoor mega events involving 1,000 or more persons. That the county is going to be requiring for entry prior to entry that the. Individuals show verification of COVID-19 vaccination status. Or a negative COVID-19 test. So they're lowering the attendance threshold for indoor mega events from 5,000 to 1,000. So. Just wanted you to be aware of of some of the things that the county is doing relating to other public events.
I I would make a motion to. Approve this item. I don't know if you want to add any of the additional things you folks are talking about, but I would make a motion. To approve. The fee waiver.
Do I hear a second? Well, there's a battle. I I think we have the fifth already. So, all right. Kelsey, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, and thank you once again, Casey, for everything you do. You're you're amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes, with the note to Casey that urgent care and Dr. Benya have both done vaccination events as well. So they may be a more local resource for us.
Motion carries.
Paul, can we get confirmation from John that if if we do have the vaccination event and they waive the fee that we, we don't need a vote? To approve the city reimbursing, or do we need to have that vote?
John, what do you think?
I would think you would need to go to move that and I think probably bring that back at the time that they just confirm. That they are able to provide vaccination services and they make that request.
Well, the meeting will be after they've already had the event.
Well, you can make that motion now.
So yeah, I'd like to make that motion that we add that if they're able to have a vaccination event and they can waive the fees. Admission fee for anyone who gets the vaccination that we, the city will reimburse the lost admission fee.
And I'll second that motion. Kelsey, can you call the roll again?
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
I'm a yes, but I wish we'd looked at the financial implications of it, but I'm an absolute yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yeah, I agree with Mike. I'd like to see what the numbers are, but I'll hope, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now on to. Item 6B. Public speaker video. Continued from August the 9th. Do I hear a motion to continue it again?
Well, let's get it. Well, let's get some stuff done.
Do we have any public speakers?
Do we have a report?
Staff report, you're correct.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll be brief. I know we have a couple items still. So this is a question before council. If you want to give direction to staff. To start allowing members of the public to give their video display when they are speaking before. At cities' public meetings. So just to know, just off the top, this is something that is technically capable. It is something that we were able to do. However, staff does have some some concerns with it. And we kind of listed through some of those potential problems there in the staff report. Including the potential for Zoom bombing. Of course, we've probably all seen examples of that where people come on and. Do or say inappropriate things. And somewhat along with that, we've had, we can have the issues of people coming on with distracting or inappropriate backgrounds. That can be disrupting to the meetings. Of course, having the video does require some extra technical steps to be taken. Both by the speaker and also by our technical staff. And then it also turns our media staff into basically having to serve as the the video police. To make sure that in addition to everything that they're, what they're doing to run the meeting and make sure that it's being technically produced. To make sure that, you know, things are being done, you know, appropriately. And to, you know, screen things if if something inappropriate does pop up. But again, this is something that we do have the ability to do. We don't know how much longer we're going to be. In the, you know, in this hybrid or not hybrid, I should say, in this remote meeting format. Where we're having to, you know, do the meetings by Zoom. So we don't know if that's going to be continuing past. In the end of September. We did check around just very briefly with, and by by no means this is considered to be a a formal or complete survey. But we did check around with some of the the nearby jurisdictions to see, you know, what they were doing. Cities of Santa Monica, Los Angeles and Calabasas. They're currently only allowing audio. In some cases, they're they're phone-in only and some other cases, it's like we do here. It's video, I mean, audio but through Zoom, but they don't allow them to provide the video. Another one, a little closer to home, the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, they do allow videos for their public speakers. But again, we we did not do an extensive survey and I don't provide that to be, you know, fairly representative or to make any point, but. Just to show that it's is being being done both ways currently in some of the local jurisdictions. If you happen to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Karen? I see your hand.
Mayor Grisanti, if I could just confirm for you, you don't have any public speakers for this.
Thank you, Kelsey. Karen?
Thanks. I I just have to say, for the reasons listed in the staff report, I think. The safest thing is to continue the way we've been doing our meetings. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Bruce's hand and then Steve's hand.
All right, so I I think that it's been, the meetings have been impaired by not being able to see people that are speaking and I I think that the residents feel. That they get a fair shake when they can be seen. I will note that I attended a COG meeting after I was first elected. That's, you know, that spoke me, that was, there was video there. As Steve said, the school board, the coastal commission, which if anyone's going to Zoom bomb anyone, they're going to get bombed. They 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 allow anyone to be seen. They have been the entire COVID time. So for those, so there's, there are many that allow it. I think it's the right thing to do. I also think we should add, I had I had hoped that it would be included so we can consider it separately or at the same time. The sharing of time. In fact, this evening, for example, I know Joe Drummond was going to want to get eight minutes for the. Big Rock Matter and she had ample residents who were going to be on the line, who were who were giving her time. That was something that got cut off when the Zoom started as well without any city council authorization to cut it off. So I I'm gonna, I'm. So I, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to move that we do allow video and that we also allow time sharing. Um, we'll see how that gets sliced and diced or just rejected.
Steve, you're up.
Uh, yes, I spoke to Alex when I just heard about this before, and, and Alex said he can do whatever you want. But he, it does put him in a, in some, a tough position in terms of having to, to watch each one of these screens, each one of these, uh, sites show up. You know, we don't want another Jeffrey Toobin event. Uh, and, and I, I just think, look, I, I, I go back with Steve McClaren said, these meetings are not going to go on that much longer. I think we're coming to the end of them, trying to change it right now, just puts us, you know, a chance to screw things up. Uh, what we've got is not the best, but it's been working, and I would recommend we just keep going the way we're going for another month and hopefully open it up after that.
Thank you, Steve. I see Mikey's hand.
Um, I'm probably leaning more Steve, but if we're going to entertain this, my thought would be we require people have a background. Because, you know, that way it eliminates the 40 acres behind you of whatever's going on there. Um, that's the only idea I've come up with that might make it palatable, but I don't know technically for the staff. They'd have to be background police, you know, so, um, I'm not urging that, but if, if it was going that way, I was going to shove that in there as some sort of, you know, put a dam on the whole thing, because we never got photobombed. We've already been bombed earlier in this, and, uh, a couple of them were kind of funny, I must admit, but nonetheless. You know, there you go.
Thank you, Mikey. Karen?
I have to say again, I think it's just too risky. Uh, I realize it's not ideal, uh, as we've said again and again tonight on various things, nothing is. I don't think it's worth the risk. Uh, I think being the city that we are, we're a target. And I also think, um, we're going to, our meetings are going to get longer or we're going to get less done because it's going to take more time. So I would like to make a motion that we keep things the way they are.
I think Bruce's motion dies for a lack of a second. And I'm in a pardon me? Mikey?
I would like us to consider time sharing, though. I don't see why that's really that difficult. And it might actually speed some meetings up. Um, maybe not.
Karen, is that a, a, uh, change you are willing to accept? To your motion?
I, I'd like to say something about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, and if I could just jump in, that's not an item that's on the agenda. So any direction would have to be to bring that back.
Understood.
For discussion.
Okay, then if I'm not supposed to discuss that, I won't.
Okay. Steve?
It's, I'll make a motion that we continue, that we continue the meetings as they are right now, uh, at least for another month. And then if we don't open up, we can come back and redress this issue.
So basically you and Karen made the same motion, so one of you can be the second.
I'll second.
All right. Kelsey, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Fair, did you intend to accept a friendly amendment from Councilmember Pearson to bring back an item to allow, to consider allowing time referrals?
Okay, yes.
And Councilmember Yurin, do you also accept that?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
No, but I do support coming back with the other discussion.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number seven A. Proposed parking management plan along Tranqus Canyon Road from Pacific Coast Highway to Tapia Drive. Sponsored by Mayor Grisanti and Councilmember Fair. Do we have a staff report?
We do, uh, and we have a presentation. I'll keep this, uh, brief.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Uh, the following item is, uh, to implement a parking management plan along Tranqus Canyon uh, road. Uh, next slide, please. More specifically, this would involve, uh, placing parking restrictions on the west side of Tranqus Canyon Road, uh, from a Pacific Coast Highway to Tapia Drive. Restricting overnight parking, uh, similar to what has been implemented for segments of Pacific Coast Highway, which have demonstrated to have resulted in an increase in public parking availability. Uh, next slide. Signs would be placed along the, uh, western side of Tranqus Canyon Road, restricting parking between 12 AM and 3, uh, AM, uh, daily. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this would include, uh, updates to several sections of, uh, chapter 10.19 of the Malibu Municipal Code, as well as subsequent coastal development permit for signs in the public roadway. Uh, council may direct staff to bring back an ordinance with these changes. Uh, after the ordinance is updated, uh, and accepted, uh, staff would follow up with a coastal development permit for signs. Uh, and this concludes my presentation. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Grisanti, we did have one speaker sign up for this item, Bill Sampson, but he's no longer in the meeting.
Well, sweet dreams, Bill. Uh, Bruce?
Two quick questions. Uh, one is, is this people simply leaving their cars empty overnight, or is this another people living in their cars issue? And the other question is, well, I'll preamble, my street has had this since I have lived in my house. It's great that other people can't park on the street at night. It sucks that sometimes people that live here can't park on the street at night. And you can't have it one way. You have to have it both ways. You can't have it one way and, and not the other. So has anyone consulted the people that live there? Do they care about losing the parking at night? But those are my two questions.
Uh, we have, we're for, we're fortunate to have a couple of residents of the neighborhood on the council. And Mikey Pearson is one of them. Perhaps he'll fill us in. Have you talked to anybody about this?
Well, actually, I thought I was the one bringing this forward, so it was a pleasant surprise to see it came forward from two other people. Totally caught me off guard. Um, I was working on this with staff for a while, but I guess other people fast forwarded. So, yeah, there are, there has been, um, issues of people living in cars there, um, including, well, I shouldn't get into it, but some sketchy individuals. Let's put it that way. It's, it's been a problem, um, for sure. Um, there are plenty of parking for residents on the other side of the street, and they all have driveways as well. So there's not really an issue there. Um, it, all, all this does is impact, um, it, 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 it's just an awkward, it's a dangerous and awkward spot for people to live in a vehicle. Let's put it that way. Um, it's a narrow road. It's on a corner, a bunch of it. Um, it's, there's no real curb, so it, it's, it's awkward. It's, there's no, it's not very defined, a lot of it. So, uh, um, down lower it is, but that's definitely been a lot of people living in vehicles there as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Mikey. Bruce?
Yeah, so if, if the issue is with people living in their cars there, if we pass the no camping ordinance, the camping ordinance, two weeks from now, um, that's going to cover it because it'd be within the distance from a house where you can't be camping. And you're camping in a car or you're camping on the street. So, and it won't require the same, um, nice, technical niceties to get that done as this requires. Um, I'm not opposed to this, but think about the fact that maybe we're making more work than we need to.
I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know either. Karen, I see your hand raised.
Well, I see that Rob is, uh, here on screen, and it looks like he has something to say about it. That's all I was going to say.
Rob, are you ready to enlighten us?
Uh, uh, well, I did talk to a few proprietors out there and, um, talking about the parking restrictions. They understood that, uh, we were talking the west side of the street. They didn't feel that that's going to be an issue. But we can take a, take a, take, um, take a little look at it and still keep in communication with the property owners, just in case they feel like they need to have some type of parking on that side. We can, we can do some other measures for that areas like parking passers or, or something to make sure that they, um, have the ability to park there during the restricted hours.
Okay. Karen, are you satisfied?
Um, yeah, I was just going to say, you know what, Rob, thank you, because I had a note to say that and I forgot. Um, there is a, a mechanism to, uh, allow residents to apply for some kind of permit. Yes, okay. I know some other neighborhoods have that. I can't remember who, which. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see Steve's hand.
I'm just wondering if, if I go with Bruce's idea, if we've got the camping ordinance, won't that cover getting people out of there who are living in their cars, yet leave somebody who li- who lives there, allow them to park the car on the other side of the street? So I've killed two birds with one stone or three birds if I just do the camping ordinance.
I, I can give an example of where that doesn't work. So there's how do you say this? There's a situation now where there's a number of large vehicles that are constantly moving around to, to avoid the 72-hour parking issue. Um, I think it's just trying to eliminate part of that situation. So I don't know how that it's and that sometimes the cars are abandoned and, uh, some of them are cars, they're much larger than cars. So I think that's part of the issue. It's, uh, let's just say it's, it's been a lot of interesting things going on there. So that, I don't know how the camping ordinance will impact that or not. Um, but so, yeah, there's, there's musical vehicle go-around going on there, too.
Well, if I thought you guys were interested in humor, I would tell you that is, this is based on me wanting to park my truck there instead of keeping it at my house, but uh, it's not that funny. Uh, Steve, your hand is still up. Did you want to further your?
No, I'm sorry.
I, I think that Mikey is correct, and I think that, uh, this is time for a belt and suspenders kind of a solution. So I'm going to urge you to, uh, go ahead and direct staff to process an ordinance to implement a parking management plan along the west side of Tranqus Canyon Road from Pacific Coast Highway to Tapia Drive.
Paul, are you making a motion?
I am making a motion. Is there a second in the house?
I will second.
You have a motion and a second? Kelsey, are you available to call the roll?
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Uh, yes, but I still would like to try Bruce's idea, but yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for, uh, humoring me. Moving on, moving on to seven B. Uh, this, this is the Cars and Coffee, uh, thing. Is there a staff report?
Uh, good evening again, Mayor Grisanti, members of city council. I don't have a whole lot to add other than what was in the staff report. Um, we have, we did resume the Cars and Coffee event. Oh, gosh, a little over a month ago after I had been on hiatus since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, we did, we've been doing the event as a city event since 2014 with, uh, local car expert Armando Petretti, who is, is here as well to answer any questions. And that was after the council actually approved the event as a city-sponsored program. Uh, it takes place on the second and fourth Sunday of each month from seven to nine AM at the Malibu Bluffs parking lot. And we did take a lot of factors into consideration when we, we made the decision to, um, resume the event, including the, the limited amount of size there at the Bluffs parking lot. We're able to control that, that space. It's fairly small. Uh, typically has not very many attendees. It usually has 100 attendees or less. And, uh, there's just adequate parking there, and we've had no reports or issues regarding our specific, um, event. So uh, happy to answer any questions you have. I know it's been a long night and, um, Armando is here as well. Like I said, if you have any, any additional questions about the event specifically, he can touch base as we work with him, uh, very closely to put the event on.
Do we have any public speakers, including Armando?
Yes, Armando signed up, and we also have Bill Sampson, who has left the meetings. We'll just hear from Armando Petretti.
Thank you, Armando. Are you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Um, so we started this event, uh, in 2014, uh, with Bob Stallings, uh, who was director of Park and Rec at that time. Um, we, uh, it's a free event, uh, that, uh, the city, uh, organizes. And, uh, the objectives are to bring car enthusiasts and collectors from our local and nearby communities together in a beautiful and safe environment like Bluff Spark. Um, we don't tolerate, uh, irresponsible behavior. We control the flow of cars that come in and out. Um, we don't impact, uh, traffic on PCH because again, we start at seven o'clock in the morning. Um, and we also have a low impact on Bluff Spark, uh, because, uh, we don't, uh, have conflict, uh, of schedule with the other events that go on. Um, and I think we have no complaints since 2014. Um, now, what has happened across Creek, um, uh, during COVID was not acceptable. And, uh, we had nothing to do, Malibu Cars and Coffee, nothing to do, um, with that. In my opinion, um, what happened, it was just a perfect storm. In fact, there were several unique factors that took place. Um, there were very few activities available and driving a car was one of them. Uh, all the organized, uh, car events in Southern California were on lockdown. Uh, parking lots and shopping centers were empty. And the parking lot in front of Malibu Kitchen is a well-known in the car community. Uh, then social media, uh, made this, uh, informal gathering big and famous in no time. And there was an organization, no control and no rules. Um, but I think that now the situation has changed, and, uh, the reason is because since August, uh, organized and permitted car events are reopening again. There are over 50 events in Ventura, Los Angeles and Orange County every given weekend. Some of these events, like Supercar Sunday and Sunset GT, attracts delayed model, muscle cars and exotic car owners. And in many cases, those are the type of cars that are very loud and encourage the careless and dangerous behavior that I have personally witnessed often on PCH and around town. The reopening of those, uh, of those events is going to alleviate a lot of the pressure from Malibu and PCH. I also believe that with the end of summer, we have already seen the peak of cars and people invading all the Malibu parking lots.
Armando, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Armando. Are there any other speakers?
No, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, so Karen, I see you got your hand up first, followed by Bruce, followed by Mikey, followed by Steve.
Good, thank you. Um, and thank you, Armando. Uh, I know Lieutenant Braden is not in the meeting anymore, and I don't know if anybody can, from the city can, uh, give us any information about the data. Do we have an indication that there's an increase in speeding or reckless driving on the second and fourth Sundays of the month? Uh, either on the highway or coming down Malibu Canyon toward this event or something like that? That's my first question. So I don't know if anybody here has that information? Yes, no?
Councilmember Fair, I don't have any specific information on the data, but I did have an extensive conversation with Lieutenant Braden uh, about this event, and I asked him, uh, if they had seen any impacts or, uh, increase in, in accidents or reports of, uh, you know, reckless driving or other issues or, or anything on PCH, whether it was related to this event or not. And he indicated that he did not have any, uh, data or, or any indications from his field units that, that there had been uh, any issues or anything from the event that had contributed to concerns with traffic on PCH.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um, okay, I, I'm not a car person. I don't go to this event. Uh, I did once. I had no idea. A friend of mine who lives in LA said, hey, I'm going to be in Malibu tomorrow. Come and meet me. It was at the unpermitted event at Malibu Village. It was at the unpermitted event at Malibu Village. I was in shock at what I saw. So obviously, that's not the kind of thing we want to encourage, the, the crowd, the number of people. I don't know what they were doing, driving to get there and back, but just what was going on in that parking lot alone was, looked like to me a mess. So, but I would say this has been going on since I think twenty fourteen. There's an interest. There's an interest. It's early in the morning. It's before beach traffic. It's, to me, it looks like a win-win. And again, a million times better than what I saw at Malibu Village. So I, I don't see a problem here. I don't see a problem as far as COVID. I don't think this is related to street racing. I don't go to this. I don't know what kind of cars show up, if they're you know, muscle cars with loud engines or something that's been modified to make the car louder than it normally would have been. Jesse, can anybody answer that question?
Yeah, the, the event, I mean, there are both types of cars that come, but this event typically you'll see more of the classic type cars versus, you know, brand new Ferraris lined up or one of my car knowledge isn't super extensive either, so I won't get too deep in the models, but this one is geared a little bit more towards classic cars, so we see more of those than we do high-end performance sports cars.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Bruce, followed by Steve. Well, I'm sorry, Bruce, followed by Mike, followed by Steve. Sorry.
So leaving aside that I, I don't like the idea of promoting anything during COVID. You know, where people are gathered, this is not a, this is not a huge gathering. This is something that's been going on for a long time. I, I live not too far from there at all. I drive by there many times on Sundays or used to at least. And but for the fact that I know there's a sign that says it's going on, I never would have noticed it because the traffic isn't affected. Cars aren't a problem. These are not the cars, I don't believe, that are racing up and down PCH on Saturdays and Sundays. The other informal gathering is a big problem. I've been complaining about it and residents have been complaining to me about it for eight or nine months. And I'm sure they were complaining to others before I was elected. I don't understand why that's still being tolerated. It's still going on. I go over there. Before we got the Delta variant, I was going over to Marmalade on the weekends for breakfast and the, the parking lot there is a S show. So I don't get why we're allowing that to continue to occur. It seems like it's an event without a TUP. That's for another day. But this, this, this is, this is a nice little event and I don't have a problem with it. I, I do wonder though, page two of three of the staff report says, staff believes that resuming the Cars and Coffee event will help alleviate issues related to unauthorized car shows. I, I don't get what the relationship is. If those are different cars and those people are there being illegally having their show, why does the staff believe this is gonna change anything there? Not that that's a reason not to allow this, but what's the point of that assertion?
Can I jump in on that? Or Jesse, you go ahead?
Sure, no, please. You're the mayor.
The, I've been to, to this event many times over the years. The crowd is, is much calmer and more mature. These are not people bragging about how they scorched the canyons on the way over here. Mostly they're people who have spent a lot of time and money on their vehicle. And it's a considerate rolling art show. These are not the vehicles that make you crazy. Because they're just out trying to be as obnoxious as possible. So I, I don't know that that answers your question, but that's, that's my personal experience of that group. I mean, I've when, when they first started the thing over there at the the, by Mary's, by the kitchen, Malibu Kitchen. It, it took no time at all for me to figure out that that was not a place where I wanted anybody to see me ever again. Okay, it was, it's, it's, it's bad. I know that the owners of the shopping center have been trying to get the people out of there. The people in the, who rent the spaces in the, in the, the stores hate it because they can't do any business because all their parking spaces are taken up. And nobody wants them there. But there were some, some social media wizards who were promoting this thing. And Jim Braden was very kind and went to them and told them that if they continued promoting it, they were gonna be responsible for it and charged for the costs of presenting it. And then they had their attorney call him. And he read it, their attorney, the riot act. Jim has been a hero in trying to get this done. And I think we're in the process of tamping it down and I think we're gonna succeed. But yes, nobody likes what, what went on in the shopping center. And Mikey, I'm sorry I stepped in front of you there.
It's okay, Mayor. I, I think we're pretty close here, but I just wanna back up. The only problem with Armando is he does not promote what a great human being he is enough. First of all, his show, I think it's already been set or his deal, it's for the, there's a real car nerd culture in Malibu. I'm not a car guy. Anyone who's seen my car goes, I don't give a shit. But it's dirty all the time. I don't care. I own it. It's mine. But there's people that really care. This show has never been the muscle car thing at all. And I, I do wanna add just for Armando, he is truly one of the heroes of Malibu in the fire. He was one of the people absolutely stayed behind and actually went in situations I judge too dangerous. He, so he's an upstanding citizen in this town. He is not out to do anything to hurt this town. And, and this, his car deal is in that same vein, so. I, you know, um, for discussion anyhow, I'll make a motion that we allow the show to continue.
A second app for discussion. Steve, you're up.
Yeah. I gotta slightly do a perspective. The, the car shows in the civic center were shut down by the sheriff, by our code enforcement people, by public safety. And I was even there when they first started it up, all right? And they are still being shut down. If you go down there on Sunday, Whole Foods has got IPS trucks or cars sitting in front of the driveways now letting people in. The, the Malibu Village Shopping Center was shut down. There are guards on front keeping cars out of there. The, the Malibu country, country with the country. Where, where's the, the car wash in?
Shell Station?
No, 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 the car wash, Malibu Car Wash, behind.
Right, I know what you mean.
Mart, whatever. That shut down in the morning. They shut them all down. And even though they're shut down, if you, I go down there every Sunday morning around eight o'clock, eight thirty, walk my dog. And there are still cars blowing through there. They were yesterday, day before, not last Sunday, Sunday before that, there were a bunch of Ferraris and Lamborghinis parked in the driveway that goes next to the library, you know, behind the library. They're, they, they're finding places to go. And I just think having car shows going on over here, while I'm telling people not to have car shows going on over here, sooner or later is gonna cause me a problem. And I don't know if you read Chris Frost's email that came through this morning where they had the chips, were catching speeders all over the place on last Sunday. So, you know, look. I believe, at least the story that I understand, you know, when the COVID came in, it opened up the highways, that vacuum was filled by people with fast cars. And if I had a fast car, I'd probably be out there with them doing the same darn thing. I just think speeding on, racing on PCH is a bad thing, all right? And putting anything in place that encourages more of that, I think is bad. The thing that says there aren't people speeding there at seven o'clock in the morning, I tell you what, I eat my breakfast and look down on PCH. And I don't, I wish Braden were here because I don't know how many of the motorcycle cops are catching people speeding down PCH early in the morning. So I just think, look, we got a whole bunch of stuff going on. I get a lot of complaints every week about people speeding on PCH. I just think we're encouraging that to go on, but I'm purely by myself.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce?
Yes, I, I'm confident that these are unrelated events. And I, I don't think, in fact, I, not only do I think that having it in one place is not an invitation to have it the other place. I think it's the other way around, actually. I think that the city permitted event is a good reason to even clamp down more on the unpermitted event. I just have to say, I, I don't know what other people are looking at at the Country Mart, but I go over there, I've taken photographs. It is not being clamped down. There is someone that owns that lot that has an absolute right to control who's in their parking lot and they're not doing it. It's, it's seventy-five percent muscle cars and high-end sports cars and people standing all throughout the area we're supposed to be driving back and forth. And the off-duty law enforcement are sitting there watching it all happen. So it is not being enforced. The owners aren't enforcing it. The security they're hiring aren't enforcing it. It's, it's just a free-for-all. But that's not this problem. But, but I didn't get an answer to my question. I, I just wanna understand why is it say here that staff believes that allowing this to start again or happen will alleviate the issue at the other place? Because it's going on at the same time and it's not alleviating anything.
Our, our thought process behind that and, and part of it was, we, you know, in chatting with code enforcement and, and they have been trying to deal with this and, and deal with the unauthorized car shows. And I'll use an unfair analogy. Especially since we're in the midst of building a skate park, but you know, people will unfairly demonize skateboarding. Right? In a park and on a street, on a sidewalk. And so you build them a skate park and they have an adequate place to skate. So there is no excuse for somebody to say, I don't have a place to skate. Where am I supposed to skate? Well, this event does not cater to that bigger crowd, or I shouldn't say that, we don't get that type of crowd there very heavily. It is an opportunity for some of them that they were interested in being a part of this safely and within the guidelines of the event that we would allow that. And so our hope was that providing a legal outlet for them to come and do it in a very confined, constricted area that we control would allow us to, to, to show we're doing what we can to help accommodate a population of the section. Admittedly, are a bunch non-residents versus residents. I'm not sitting there checking IDs for every person that comes in, but that's the reality, right? There are residents that want this too. And there are people that come to enjoy the car. So it was to provide a, a legal outlet for them in a, in a confined space that we control.
I, I appreciate that answer. I, I think they are two different groups. I doubt you're gonna get a very large percentage, a meaningful percentage of the people at the Country Mart. But, you know, code enforcement, the one thing that's gonna stop the cars being all over the Country Mart and people standing over the parking lot is finding the owner of the parking lot. The minute they have to pay something, they will enforce the law. Right now, they have a, they have a free-for-all that they allow, that they allow to happen for free. But thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen?
Yeah, I agree. These are two different issues, at two different locations, two different crowds. And it looks to me like one's a problem and one's not. The one before us tonight doesn't seem to be the problem. I know it's not agendas, but it seems like we need to figure out how to leverage some improvement over there at whatever it is. I guess that center is a combination of two owners, Malibu Village and Malibu Country Mart, three owners.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't you think the tenants alone, maybe it's too early for them to be open? But I would think the tenants alone would be applying pressure, saying, we're paying rent and, and nobody can park here to shop in our stores or eat in our restaurants or whatever. So anyway, um, I see Steve is waving his hand. I'm ready to make a motion, but I'll wait.
Just to
We already have a motion.
Just to respond to Karen's comment. They, they, when the car shows were going on, the merchants were happy. The guy that owns the Malibu Country Kitchen, it was out swearing at the people that were trying to get the cars out of there. Marmalade early in the morning was packed. All right, so those people were making money as a result of the car show. So they turned, they quit doing all of that to help shut down some of those shows, so.
Well, I get that, but if you need to go to the bank or you wanna go to Lululemon or something like that, you're out of luck.
Yeah, that's possible, yes.
Sean Cotty?
I was just gonna note that we do have a motion in a second. I'm restraining beyond the confines of the agenda.
I'd like to call them up, call the, Kelsey, can you take the role for us, please? I'll call the question.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
No.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
The motion is to allow this to continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I wanna thank you all for your, your endurance. There's one more. One more thing. We're going to item seven C. Wildlife Conservation Board Grant for Liberty Canyon Wildlife Crossing Project. Bruce and I became aware that there is an opportunity for the Wildlife Conservation Board to make a twenty million dollar donation to the funding of the Liberty Canyon Wildlife Crossing Project. And we're asking for there to be a letter authorized in favor of this. It's no cost to the city. I see, is there a staff report? Is there any members of the public?
No, Mayor Grisanti, you don't have any speakers on this item.
Okay, so Bruce?
Just real quick, and I noticed the staff report indicated that we've previously twice supported this project. This is an opportunity to get it some funding. It's not gonna matter whether we support it or not, but it's, it's, it's the right thing to do. Pat Healy brought it to our attention. She's, she's Miss Nature/Environment Malibu, so I think we ought to do it. I make, I'll, I'll move that we approve the letter, approve sending a letter.
I'll second it.
Hey, we got a motion.
With a comment that I sent a letter to the mayor saying he should write a letter in support thinking it was too late to get it here. So well done, everybody.
Good. All right, so a motion is second. Kelsey, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Can I just remind everybody, we are adjourning in memory of, so sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me.
I have them in front of me.
Our cert member.
Yes, Peter, Peter Banning.
Thank you, yes.
All right. Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn in the memory of Peter.
Mayor Grisanti, who was the second?
You don't need a second. You, you made the motion.
If Paul made the motion, we don't need a second or a vote.
Paul, withdraw the motion. You go ahead and adjourn us.
I thought Bruce made the motion. It really doesn't matter. We're all in favor of adjourning the meeting at this point, I believe. Kelsey, please call.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
I have to devote, no, but although, yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Feels like doing for us. So, you know, I, I realize this item is receive and file, but I think we need to stay aware that we have to advocate for ourselves. It's, we're not gonna you know, things, things haven't gone well already and, and I think we have to brace ourselves to, to keep advocating. So that's all I have to say.
Karen, thank you. I'd like to just say that the, the position of the MRCA is not settled off. And Bruce, if you wanna speak, you, you may, and then we can file this and move on.
I was gonna say, I hope nothing I said was taken to mean I think we should throw it out. I, I think we just need to be more selective about the punches that we throw and maybe even not throw them as punches so much as extend our hand. But I'll make a motion that we receive and file this. But I'll make a motion that we receive and file this.
Hey, I've got a motion to receive and file.
A second.
We have four other people fighting for the second, but I I think it was, I think it was Mikey.
I don't know.
Okay, Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair? I'm sorry, Councilmember Pearson.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It takes us to item six C, Malibu Arts Association Event Fee Waiver. We have a staff report for that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Grisanti and members of City Council. The item before you this evening is a request from the Malibu Arts Association to host an art show event at Legacy Park on Sunday, August eighth. Uh, the event will showcase thirty local artists, which uh the public will be able to purchase their artwork and that artwork will support those artists as well as the Malibu Arts Association. Uh, there is no fee for the artists to participate in the event and fifteen percent of all the sales will actually go back to the Malibu Arts Association to be utilized for scholarships and books for local students. The total amount of the fee waiver request is twelve hundred and seventy-eight dollars and that includes facility use fees, staffing fees and our temporary use permit fee, which they have already paid, but we would uh give that back to them if approved by the City Council tonight. Uh, per municipal code, we allow up to six temporary use permits on a parcel each calendar year, and this would be the first one that we would use for Legacy Park. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have, and also, I believe Barbara Foin is still here from the Malibu Arts Association and she can answer any additional questions as well uh regarding the association or the event.
Thank you, Jesse. Perhaps you would like to lead off in the public comment, since we actually have someone to publicly comment.
She is our only public speaker for this item and we do have her in the meeting.
By all means, let's recognize her.
Well, so good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for letting me comment as well and I just wanted to thank the staff for working so hard with me to get all of the application materials in. Um, just to give a little very brief history, the Malibu Art Association was established back in the sixties. Um, I've only been with the Malibu Art Association now for a couple of years and just in time actually to participate in nothing because of the pandemic. And um, I I do know that, you you know, it has really im- impacted many of the artists uh very deeply. Uh, not being able to, number one, share their art, but also not be able to um uh benefit financially uh from the sales. Uh, the organization ha- has been um a supporter of um scholarships for graduating Malibu High School seniors who are pursuing um art as their as their major, whether it's visual or performance arts. And then also for um providing books. We buy books for the library uh for Malibu.